So on May 1st or May 3rd, I was voting at the old Lincoln School in Precinct 4. I was introduced to Mr. Warren Goodman, an election inspector who I was told was 101 years old, but I hear that you're really just 100 until July. Is that correct? Okay. Mr. Goodman was an active member of a team working with others to solve, to solve problems that came up during the day. Other election workers that I talked to during the brief time I was in the gym praised his hard work and cheerful nature while helping with the election. Let me give some shout outs to those election workers that I spoke to. Jim Slaton, who many of you know, the election warden who works the elections every year to honor his mother, Edie Slaton, who was the president of the League of Women Voters in Illinois where he grew up. I also met election inspectors Arlene Hall and Renee Johnson. Ms. Johnson is the mother of Patrol Officer Patah Johnson of the Brookline Police Department, who many of us know. And Patrol Officer Chris Elock was also at the polls helping with security. I was so inspired by Mr. Goodman's commitment to making democracy work in Brookline that I mentioned it at last week's meeting. John Van Skoyak on Friday suggested that we invite Mr. Goodman to the Select Board meeting to receive a proclamation. So we organized this presentation with the help of Bill McGuire, our Veteran Affairs Officer.
Recording in progress.
Who brought Mr. Goodman here this evening. So, Mr. Goodman, on behalf of the Brookline Select Board and an appreciative town, I present you with this proclamation which reads as follows. Whereas Warren Goodman of 70 Pearl Street, Brookline, Massachusetts, was born in July of 1921 and is a vigorous 100-year-old resident of the town of Brookline. And whereas Warren Goodman served his country as a member of the US Army Air Corps in World War II. And whereas Warren Goodman has honor, was honorably discharged from the military and is a disabled veteran as a result of his service. And whereas Warren Goodman continues to serve his country and the town of Brookline by assisting with the town election as an election inspector in Precinct 4. And whereas Warren Goodman is a member of the American Legion Post 11 here in Brookline. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Select Board of the Town of Brookline, Massachusetts, on behalf of the residents of the Town of Brookline, and with great appreciation for his contributions defending democracy as a member of the Army Air Corps in World War II, and help making democracy work as a Brookline Election Inspector, hereby gives our sincere thanks and appreciation to Warren Goodman for his many years of meritorious service to America and to the town of Brookline. Mr. Goodman, here is.
Here is the proclamation signed by members of the Select Board. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congratulations and thank you for your service.
You may sit.
Thank you so much Bernard. I will give one quick update. There are a number of events related to the US Open that the Brookline Adult and Community Education is hosting, including this Thursday, a virtual lecture by senior historian with USGA on the US Open and Francis, is it woman? For more information, please check out their website, www.brooklineadulted.org. Let's do any other announcements. And then I know some members of this board would like to make some comments regarding the tragic events over the weekend. Miriam.
Thank you. I have three very disparate announcements, so I'm just going to go through them. They're not at all connected. And the first, I really have to just shout out a huge thank you to the school committee and the BEU for coming to an agreement. Having children currently in the Brookline school system, it really literally hit home. So I really appreciate everyone coming to the table, the long hours negotiating teams put in. And I really encourage us to already start thinking about the next steps. We are going to have to come together as a community to pass an override. And so I think this is an opportunity for us to really move forward. And so I hope everyone sees it that way. The second announcement, again, I told you they're very disparate announcements, is that the US government is now providing again, eight more free home COVID tests. You can go to www.covid.gov/tests and I will put that in the chat and order your free eight tests to be delivered by the US Postal Service to your house. It's very simple. I did it last night. And that's for everybody. So please share that widely. And the third announcement is the ARPA Review Committee Meeting Subcommittee. We have not gone away. We had a wonderful planning meeting last, this last week, and we will be having our next public meeting on Friday, May 27th at 2:00 PM. We'll give some updates on the, where we are. We'll talk about the non-competitive slate that we will be proposing to the Select Board, and we will debrief with opportunity for public input. So please come and join us. Please come be and be prepared to tell us what worked and what didn't work with the Phase 1 funding. And you can also email us at arpa review@brooklinemass.gov. I think that's what it is. That's it for my three very disparate announcements.
Great. Bernard.
Okay, I have two announcements. First of all, I'd like to sort of follow up on Miriam's announcement regarding the COVID test. If you're on social security, you can go to CVS or Walgreens and get for free COVID tests, free. So that's another way in which we can get tests. They just take your social security card, fill out some forms. I guess they want to avoid people coming back two or three times. But it's an opportunity to get additional tests. Secondly, you know, very painful statement, as a black person here in America, of the terrible racist attack on the black community in Buffalo, New York really was painful to me, as it was to a lot of people. And, you know, thinking about what you say after something like this happens is kind of difficult because anything we say has been said so many times before. It's been said when, you know, Charleston's Emmanuel AME Church was attacked. It was said when Asian community was attacked in Atlanta. The Hispanic community was attacked in El Paso. And the Jewish community was attacked in Pittsburgh. And the Sikh community was attacked in Oak Creek, Wisconsin. And the LGBT community was attacked at Pulse nightclub in Orlando, Florida. And tons of other attacks by hatred with a gun. I mean, what more can you say than what we've already said? But I think that one thing that I think is important to realize is that hate is indivisible. We can't think about these hateful attacks as isolated to particular communities because they all share a common theme, and that is irrational hatred and easy access to weapons of war that are used to wage war on Americans. And that should be our message. You know, we're in this together, and we have to figure out a way of messaging it together and solving it together. I don't have a solution, but we can't view these as sort of separate hatreds attacking separate communities. I don't have anything else to say about this because there's just nothing else to say. So, thank you.
I know Miriam wanted to say something on this subject. And then I know John has an announcement. Mike, I don't know if you.
Okay, this is a perfect, actually Bernard and I did not discuss our remarks ahead of time, but they are perfectly aligned with each other, which is to say that I agree, there are no words here. And so because there are no words, they've all been said. I think that I just wanted to take a minute to read the names of the 10 people who were murdered and give them a little bit of our recognition. So I'll do that very quickly now. Aaron Salter, 55, the store's security guard, a retired Buffalo police officer. Ruth Whitfield, 86, the mother of the former Buffalo Fire Commissioner. She was on her way home from visiting her husband at a nursing home. Pearlie Young, 77, was killed Sunday shopping for groceries. She ran a food pantry in the Central Park neighborhood for 25 years. Catherine Macy, 72, she used to write for the Buffalo News. Deacon Hayward Patterson, 67, he would often help drive people who needed transportation to the Jefferson Avenue store. Celestine Cheney, 65, she had six grandchildren and one great-grandchild. Roberta Drury, 32, Drury was described as full of life, caring, and happy. She cared about everyone. Margis D. Morrison, 52, worked as a bus aide for a first student for the past four years. Andre McNeil, 53. Andre McNeil and Geraldine Tally, 62. I couldn't find other information about them, but I still think they deserve our recognition. Thank you.
John.
So thank you to my colleagues. And I will not add to their remarks because I think they spoke eloquently, except to say, if I may just add one other point, there's a kind of a, I'll just call it a political sickness in the country right now whereby candidates occasionally feel the need to authenticate themselves by making an ad in which they demonstrate their use of a semi-automatic gun. And one such candidate did that very thing in a ad that ran in Pennsylvania with this very night, you know, there's important preliminary elections taking place in Pennsylvania. And to see that ad in the light of what happened in Buffalo is just so sad, you know, to think that we have to brag, you know, about our facility with a gun that could be misused by a person to kill ten innocent people, you know, a person with his own sickness. But there's also kind of a political sickness in our obsession with authenticating ourselves as being worthy of trust if we can walk to a shooting range and demonstrate our facility with a gun. I hope we get over that. I don't know how we get over that, but I think it's part of the, it's a very important part of coming to terms with the terrible, terrible record that this country has when it comes to deaths by handguns and other types of guns. So enough said on my part on that. The other thing that I wanted to mention is complete change of subject here and a complete change of tone, forgive me. But this is to sort of celebrate a community, which is the Greater Boston Haitian community. And I'll be the first to admit, I need a lot of educating, you know, about the Greater Boston Haitian community. I've grown in my appreciation of them a bit in recent months and years. It's, and even as I did, it caught me by surprise to read in the Globe today that the third largest Haitian community in the US is in Boston. And I would have to say, I think Brookline is very much a part of that. And that's, that's wonderful. And I want to sort of congratulate those from the Haitian community who are part of our Brookline community on Haitian Flag Day, which is celebrated on May 18. And I'm also going to mention a couple of, just a couple of facts about the Haitian community and the history and the importance of Haitian Flag Day from an article by Janay Osterheld, it was in the Boston Globe. And so one of those facts is that Haiti has the distinction of being the country where for the first time there was a successful slave revolt. And it's also the country that set the example of former slaves forming their own country. And that's a notable example to this day. It's also notable that WEB Du Bois was Haitian. Chicago, and I'm quoting from Janay Overholt's article, was founded by Haitian Jean Baptiste Pointe de Saab, founder of Chicago. And so there's much to celebrate by all of us on this occasion of Haitian Flag Day. And I just want to congratulate the Greater Boston Haitian community on this day and maybe set the stage for us to do a little bit of a more formal recognition of it a year from now. Thank you.
Any other announcements or updates? Seeing none, let's go into public comment. John, would you like to do the honor?
Yes. So my ad-libbed introduction to public comment is that, please remember, if you are here for public comment, that you will be limited to three minutes. Devin is the timekeeper. And please also remember that, to the extent that we can, it would be ideal to keep comments friendly, neighborly. And the Select Board is constrained from actually responding directly to comments that are made during these meetings. But if people want to follow up with emails, we would be glad to respond to people that way. But please don't expect us to get into a dialogue tonight. We're here to listen.
The first person signed up for public comment is Jonathan Klein. You've been promoted to a panelist. Your three minutes will begin when you're ready.
Thank you for having me, Jonathan Klein. I live at 150 St. Paul Street, and I'm a member of the Housing Advisory Board. The first thing I want to say is to congratulate Warren Goodman, and thank you for including that in your ceremonies tonight. That was really quite inspiring. And, and I appreciated the opportunity to see Mr. Goodman, and I also thank him for his service. I wanted to comment on warrant Article 30, which I know you will be considering later this evening. I apologize that I can't be present for that public hearing, so I wanted to take this advantage, advantage of your public comment time. I urge you to strongly consider and vote favorably on the proposed revision for warrant Article 30, which allows us to continue to pursue the opportunity to have senior housing at the Kent Station Street lot. I want to commend the work that's been done by a lot of people since that was originally filed, including Jeff Walker, the primary petitioner, and Roger Blood, the Chair of the Housing Advisory Board for trying to find a formula that would work to allow us to meet and accommodate the parking needs of the merchants in the neighborhood, and also allow us to build this very sorely needed development that would provide 50, you know, deeply affordable units for seniors who could take advantage of that wonderful location. So I hope you'll consider that favorably. I thank you for your time and attention, and wish you good success with your work tonight.
At this time, there are 15 attendees, and no one has used the hand raise or Q&amp;A feature to indicate they'd like to make a comment. Great.
If I had known that, I would have taken more time. Thank you.
So we're going to move into our miscellaneous. The meeting minutes are typically moved first before I read the remaining miscellaneous items. Any edits or comments, Bernard?
I gave Kate a couple edits, had some things.
Okay. So I move.
Nothing substantive.
Okay, I move approval of the meeting minutes with a few minor changes offered by Bernard from the May 10th, 2022 meeting. All those in favor, Bernard?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Miriam?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. And now the rest of the miscellaneous. I move approval of a proclamation recognizing June as LGBTQ Pride Month in the town of Brookline, approving the letter of intent for, between the Town of Brookline and Eversource for electric vehicle charger infrastructure installation at the Municipal Services Building Transfer Station and Webster Street Parking Lot, approving the amendment to the 2019 Electric Vehicle Make Ready Program Site License Agreement and the Site Host Agreement between the Town of Brookline and Eversource for the Coolidge Corner Stop of the MBTA Green Line C Branch, Municipal Lot 6, Kent Street and Webster Place, and Municipal Lot 8, Fuller Street, approving a permit for the Susan G. Komen New England Three-Day Walk on August 26, 22 through August 27, 22. Approving a contract with Consigli Construction Company in the amount of $57,400 for pre-construction services during the schematic design phase of peer school project. Approving Change Order Number 11 with Gilbane in the amount of $14,287 for the Driscoll School Project. Approving Change Order Number 23 with Scanzka in the amount of $361,390 related to the Brookline High School Expansion Project. Approving Amendment Number 10, increase of $127,060 to the contract with Hill International for added services for summer work at the third-floor classrooms and quad renovations for the Brookline High School Expansion Project. Approving an appropriation transfer request from the Department of Transportation as follows, from equipment repair and maintenance to data processing equipment in the amount of $4,550 for the purchase of a new radar speed and volume counter. And that is the last of the miscellaneous. All those in favor of that consent agenda, please say aye, Bernard?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Miriam?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. So we will have the first item on our regular calendar, Change of Manager. Is Stephanie Bedrow here? Great. Stephanie Bedrow, are you with us? Okay, let's maybe give her some time and go to the waiving building permit fees with BHA. Good evening, Roger.
Hello.
Are you the one that's presenting on waiving the building permit fee?
I think I'm the first one teeing up, and I will do that by, if I might, reading you a brief letter that you probably have in your packet from the, wait a minute, I'm just trying to pull it up here. There we go. So, thank you. I'm Roger Blood, and I'm Chair of the Housing Advisory Board. Very happy to see this agenda item, important agenda item, on for this evening. At its March meeting, the Housing Advisory Board discussed ways to continue advancing the town's support of the Brooklyn Housing Authority as it undertakes the rehabilitation and modernization of its federally assisted properties utilizing HUD's Rental Assistance Demonstration Project, also known as RAD. In February of 2018, the town provided the BHA with $400,000 pre-development loan from the town's housing trust, enabling the BHA to undertake planning activities and preparation necessary to secure financing for this important preservation initiative. Since that time, the Select Board has provided building permit fee waivers for the BHA's project at 86 Summer Street, 61 Park Street, and 90 Longwood Avenue. The town has also made funding commitments from its housing trust, and it was the home program, to support the redevelopment of properties at 91 Longwood Avenue and 32 Marion Street. As part of the town's strong commitment to this effort, we either have or currently requesting that the Select Board vote to waive the building permit fees on the BHA's two upcoming projects at 32 Marion Street and at 50 Pleasant Street, both of which are actively moving towards starting construction within the next year. In voting to make this recommendation, the Housing Advisory Board recognizes the unique status and role that the BHA fulfills as the major provider in the town of low-income rental housing. Funds not expended on building permit fees will directly support extensive renovation work on 100 affordable units at 50 Pleasant Street, as well as the construction of 115 new affordable units at 32 Marion Street, also known as the Colonel Floyd Apartments, which will include many aging-in-place features, high-efficiency heating, cooling, and appliances, as well as expanded program space. The Select Board continues to recognize the Housing Authority as a uniquely close partner to the town in achieving its affordable housing goals by providing safe and decent housing for many of the town's most vulnerable residents. Because of this unique role, we ask tonight that the Select Board, again, to consider waiving the building permit fees for these two projects at 32 Marion Street and 50 Pleasant Street. Separately from that, but closely related, I would like to also mention that the Housing Advisory Board earlier had considered and voted unanimously to recommend that the Select Board adopt a general fee waiver approval policy for the BHA going forward, and again, in light of its unique affordable housing contribution to the town. That, if you do consider that either this evening or at some future date, it would apply only to capital projects, and we would suggest that that mean capital projects of at least $1 million. So thank you for considering both of these requests.
Great. Thank you so much, Roger, for that synopsis. Any questions or discussion from Select Board members? Mike?
I want to say, first of all, I think this is a very appropriate thing to do. It's something that we, that I think it had its genesis when the Advisory Committee invited Michael Alpern, the Executive Director of the Housing Authority, come and describe what the Housing Authority did, what its capital needs were, how it's financed, and so forth. And one of the things that came out of that conversation was that there were three or four things that, that the town could do to alleviate relatively small, but nonetheless not insignificant burden that would provide some financial relief to the, to the Housing Authority. And one of them is this. And so I'm really glad to see this coming forward. And I would, I would love to see a permanent, a permanent change in the way we deal with the Housing Authority on permits.
Bernard.
Michael, Mike said that it was a relatively small amount, but it's actually a significant amount. So if Roger could just sort of give us a sense of, you know, the amount of money we're talking about, I think, you know, the audience would get a sense of how important and how significant this could be to these developments.
It is significant on these large, these individual projects. I'm going to defer to Michael Alpern, if I might, regarding immediate access to the specific figures that you're asking about, Bernard.
That was exactly what I was going to say. Mike Alpern's in the participant list, if we want to hear from him.
He's going to make a presentation tonight.
He, he's been promoted. Hi, Michael.
Hi, everyone. And apologies in advance if you hear toddler bedtime around my house. And Michael, Sam, and it's great to see you on the board. So to answer the question, I think Bernard is right, and we are greatly appreciative of this support. So to answer the question, I think Bernard is right and we are greatly appreciative of this support. These permits can range on each of these projects from three hundred to five hundred thousand dollars following the normal formula. So I think the request we're talking about tonight could be in the five hundred to six hundred thousand dollar range. I will just emphasize that where these projects stand specifically fifty Pleasant Street and thirty two Marion. The funding applications are in with the state and are in really good shape. We're getting really good feedback that these will be financed and. To do so on the terms that we've discussed with the Select Board previously, I do have a brief presentation, but I can skip it for the, for the purpose of being brief, but just want to say. We're really, really appreciative of the town's support. I've been in touch with Dan Bennett on these two projects and he's supportive of building permit fee waivers on this matter. And we're also open to discussing, it doesn't have to be all or nothing if there's some sort of formula that makes sense to the Select Board. That could help promote additional affordable housing that the BHA develops in town or redevelops, but also ensures that the town. For its overhead and time to administer building permits and review plans that that cost is covered and. We're very open to building that into our budgets as well, but for these two specific projects, I'd just say. We're in a very sensitive time where we're in closing mode, app financing applications are in. And we're in a race to beat rising interest rates, just like every other home buyer these days. To make sure we can finance the project before mortgage rates to get too expensive to finance the debt necessary to. Redevelop fifty Pleasant Street and to build the new thirty two Marion Street.
Great, before I recognize our town administrator Mel Kleckner, John.
Thanks. Yeah, I just want to add a note here. One of the first things I experienced as a elected Select Board member back in two thousand and twenty was an invitation from Michael Alpern who who just spoke. To take a walk around, visit some of the BHA properties, have a conversation, learn a little bit more on my part. And one of the first things that came out of that conversation was the realization that. That the Housing Authority actually is on the list of properties that pay what they call pilots, payments and little taxes. And, you know, I remember saying to Michael at that time, well, you know, maybe if there's like money needed right now for certain things within the Housing Authority. From the town of Brookline, maybe we could start by not charging you your pilot, you know, so there's more than one way to help. The cause of affordable housing, which is a cause I think that we're all behind and agree on. And, you know, one way is revenue that that comes to the town that then gets appropriated and then gets shared with the Housing Authority and we've done a certain amount of that. We've shared ARPA funds with the Housing Authority, all good. But there are other things we can do and this is one of them and I just, I applaud the creative thinking. I would point out, I think, what is the obvious, which is. If we're going to, if we're going to support affordable housing. First, do no harm and we only make it more expensive to do affordable housing. You know, if we fail to make decisions such as this one, which is to forego. You know, what are pretty considerable sums in terms of building permit fees. So I really applaud the creative thinking that has come, come together on this particular proposal.
Mel.
Sure, I just want the board to be aware that we have, I think, pretty consistently. Over the last many years waived building permit fees for the Housing Authority projects and. I certainly support this, this request for these two projects. You know, we, as has been mentioned, we've become more of a financial partner over the years with the Housing Authority and it wouldn't make much. Sense, in my opinion, to charge building permit fees. We don't do that for town projects, so. I don't think we should be doing that for the Housing Authority. With respect to Roger's proposal for an ongoing policy, I don't object to that. The only thing I would say is there are times. That there are funding sources that will pay external funding sources that will pay building permit fees. It's an eligible expense. And I don't think either of us would want to forego that revenue. So if we do create a policy going forward, I would just say carve that possibility out. But totally supportive of this request.
Great, maybe we should make it official. Any other comments from Select Board members? Thank you for keeping it succinct and. And easy to follow. All those in favor. Of approving the recommendation from the Housing Advisory Board to waive the building permit fees for the Brookline Housing Authority's upcoming development projects at thirty two Marion Street. And fifty Pleasant Street, please say I Bernard.
I.
John.
I.
Miriam.
Enthusiastically I.
Mike.
I.
And the chair votes I. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Let me just briefly say the town really is a terrific partner and we greatly appreciate this. The Select Board's made terrific commitments to affordable housing in the BHA, so thank you.
Great, I look forward to continuing the town BHA working group that will now be represented by Mike Salmon, who has just recently joined the board. Okay.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you. Let's circle back to the change of manager request. I see Stephanie Bedrow.
Thank you. Sorry about that technical difficulties. Do you think we'd be used to by now, but still. So I'm here on behalf of Bruci LLC DBA XOXO Sushi. And we're here seeking to amend the licensee's liquor license to change the manager from Jacob Simmons, who's the current manager of record, to Desmond Chow. Desmond has several years of experience in operations and in the kitchen and he will be the executive chef for XOXO Sushi. The board has his tips certificate, his crowd manager certificate, his proof of residency. And he will be running the restaurant and working upwards of sixty hours a week. And I know the restaurant will be a welcome addition to the town and Desmond, I think, will make a wonderful chef for the restaurant. Mr. Chow is here this evening if the board has any questions and that they would like answered directly. And I'll also just say as far as timing for the opening, if that's a question, and they were held up from for some permitting signage issues, so they're hoping. The beginning, the middle to end of summer for an opening date. Thank you.
Please let us know when that date is more known and we'll try to send one of our Select Board members.
This is the place that used to be the Pete's Coffee and Tea, right? Well, yeah.
Okay, it used to be a Pete's on Boylston Street.
So right near my house. In other words, I'm volunteering.
Okay, we'll send Miriam. Any discussion, questions from Select Board members? This seems pretty straightforward.
We go together.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, you might get two of us, but not three, because that would be a quorum. Any. Any questions, thoughts? Pearls of wisdom, John?
Quick comment, which is that I happen to have been at that address. For another purpose this weekend and I noticed a lot of work going on. And if you haven't mentioned it already, if you have, pardon me, but what, what is your projected opening date at this point?
They're thinking mid to end of summer.
Mid to end of summer, great.
Yeah.
If I sound a little bit, you know, kind of anxious, could you speed it up a little bit? Okay, thanks, okay.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, I will move approval for the application of a change of manager. From Jacob Simmons to Desmond Chow for Bruci LLC doing business as XOXO Sushi at eleven fifty four Boylston Street. All those in favor? Bernard?
I.
John?
I.
Miriam?
I.
Mike?
I.
And the chair votes I. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
So we've got two interviews for boards and commissions and then we will have a couple of public hearings on some of our licensing. The first up is Spencer Holt, who's interested in joining our Commission for Diversity, Inclusion and Community Relations. Oh, and you're in person. Wonderful.
Oh, wow.
Step up to. It's so rare now. So if you just want to introduce yourself, give like a ninety second pitch about who you are, why you're interested, why you'd be a good addition, and then we'll open it up to questions from our board members.
Sure, thank you. My name's Spencer Holt. I'm relatively new to the town of Brookline. I won't go into a ton of the details on my resume in case we can reference that later. But in short, I really want to serve sort of for selfish reasons. I get. I don't think there's a better feeling than being able to give back to your community. I think that people are a product of their community and. I mean, I know myself, I have a lot to thank for the communities I've been a part of in my life, so. As I said, my resume, I've been hopping around a bunch of different places and gotten a lot of experiences and unique perspective that I think I could offer for a border commission. And I'd love to be able to give that back to the community. But more importantly, I know that as much as I feel I have to offer to a border commission, there's plenty that I still have to learn. And I would love to be able to learn and grow from the experience of being able to serve the community around me and take some of those lessons with me when I intend to serve in the future.
Great, any questions from Select Board members? Miriam.
Great, thank you for volunteering. I have a couple of questions. The first is just out of curiosity because clearly reading your CV, you're an athlete. So I'd be, I just love to know what sport is or are your sports. But the second is, you know. What drives you to be interested in the diversity inclusion space? I think that's a really important, I think, I've heard something from you already that's really important, which is you're a learner. And I always, to me, that's, there's no higher value than lifelong learning. Well, there are probably a few, but it's up there. So that's great and I love that because I'm always learning too. But what, what makes this commission the one you want to be on when we have twenty, right? And, and also what sports?
So sports, throughout high school, I was a three sport athlete. I wasn't the most coordinated child, so I was mostly running, so it was cross country. Winter track and then spring track and I did a little bit of work with, we had a unified arts program, so. I was able to play basketball and also with track and field with in that capacity. In college, I, I discovered Ultimate Frisbee and joined it for the, you know, excitement of it, but really stuck for the community of it. Because there are a lot of people who've been playing that sport since they were in high school. Where I came from, that wasn't really an option, so, but that's what I still play today. I play a little bit of club, a little bit of pickup with that. As for the commission, I believe, I believe I signed up, I volunteered for two commissions, the Diversity, Inclusion and Belonging and then the Commission for Public Health. And I chose those because I think they reflect, I think I have the most. Most of my background best offers itself to those two commissions. As you said, lifelong learning, really. I always consider myself a lifelong learner, but that really, the lesson was renewed for me after I graduated college. I realized I wasn't really doing with my degree what I was really passionate about and what I really cared about. And so I, in making an effort to. Move closer to the greater Boston area and work for a company down here, I also found outlets that I could use to. Serve and work with people for people. And I've tried to. Utilize those outlets, not just outside of work, but within my work as well. So specifically for the diversity commission. I'm currently serving on a diversity and inclusion and belonging board in my nine to five and I was elected to go to a. The Kendall Squared Association Inclusion Drives Innovation Program. Thinking I had plenty to offer there and I found out it's, it's way more about what they can offer me and what I can learn there. And the reason I think that that subject is really important is because it really does not matter what industry you're in or what you do for work. I think inclusion, belonging and equity are something that every industry could do better at and it would help. Every industry prosper as well. It's not just what's right. I think it really could benefit any industry that applies it in the communities that surround it.
If you haven't read Heather McGee's The Sum of Us, you should put that on your reading list for your next book.
I'll do that.
Because she talks about that kind of philosophy.
Bernard.
I noticed on your resume, two things that I found interesting. First of all, the diversity, inclusion and, and what do you call it, belonging? Group you're working with at Amgen, but also your experience in the army. You know, the military has always been with fits and starts. At the sort of forefront of incorporating people with diverse backgrounds into the mission. So I'd get, I'd like to have a sense from you of, you know, how or what. Experiences, learn, learnings you've received from those two positions that would be useful for. Brookline's Diversity, Inclusion and Community Relations Commission.
Absolutely. I think also you picked two of the most contrasting organizations I've been a part of. So the Diversity, Inclusion and Belonging Group, I am a part of at Amgen. I'm, I'm very happy to work with those people. I learned a lot from them. Amgen is a very progressive company, I believe, in terms of its policies and trying to. Improve D I and B efforts in the industry, so my work there has sort of been. A little bit more of a follower. I've been playing catch up and learning about what the industry has to offer and then it's just been. Hosting events and efforts to provide that perspective to the rest of the company. Since our cohort is about six to eight people, you have the company and specifically in our location is around two hundred people, so we will host events. We try to do bi-monthly events to. Educate people on. Inclusive policy and what they can do in their day to day work to be a more inclusive ally. And then we also hold just some, some fun events. We try to celebrate holidays from various religions and. Anytime that diversity news makes its way in the industry, we like to promote and support that as well. As for the military, I think that is much more of a experience by immersion. I come from a small town in New Hampshire where there wasn't a kind of diversity. And when I joined the military, the first thing I realized in basic training that. Nobody looks the same, nobody's from the same part of the country, nobody's from the same socioeconomic background. And what the military teaches is that none of that matters. It's that you're all there to serve, so. I learned a lot about. Sort of forced immersion, not that I had an issue with that before, but how to work with people of different backgrounds and how to. Use people's different strengths from the backgrounds they come from to complete a common goal in a mission.
And more specifically, briefly, you, what, what does that provide? To the diversity commission? That, what, how does that experience, you know, inform your ideas about the diversity commission?
I think, as I said, working with people with different backgrounds. Than myself, I think it has given me a great sense of empathy and being able to put myself in other shoes. Whether it's the people on the commission or the people that the commission serves, I think I'd be able to. Provide the perspective or at least the insight that. Nobody knows everything and it's important to reach out and get more opinions when they're needed. Thank you.
John?
Spencer, thank you so much for applying for positions with Brookline, whether, whether it be, you know, CD, ICR or other position. I'm going to ask you a question and if you'll forgive me, if, I'd like you to answer it and then I'm going to explain why I asked you the question. So the question is, have you had a chance to actually observe, you know, quote unquote, attend. One of the regular meetings of the Commission on Diversity, Inclusion and Community Relations? And does that play a part in your interest in the commission?
I have, I have not gotten to see one for the town of Brookline.
Good, so, so now I'll explain why I asked the question. Good. So, so now I'll explain why I asked the question. I, I, I think that, you know, there's, there's no doubt whatsoever. This is an extraordinary resume. And having just met you tonight, I, I go so far as to say I think you're an extraordinary individual. And I want to be sure that whatever role you play with the town of Brookline is the role that takes the greatest advantage of. Your skill set and who you are as a person. And I, I think we should have that conversation after you've had a chance to observe the work of the commission. Because it plays a very distinct part in, you know, in Brookline's public profile. And it may be just the right place for your talents. It may be after you've, you know, gotten a better sense of what they do. Not your first choice. And then we can have a discussion on, you know, what other parts you might play, because there's, goodness knows. There's so many boards and commissions in Brookline. And I just know that there's going to be just the right one for someone with your, with your capabilities. And we'll have to figure out if it's, if it's CD, ICR, or another one. But thank you so much for, for volunteering.
Yes, thank you for that.
Mike, did you have something?
Yeah, I, I just want to say how. I absolutely agree with your comments about what you learn in the military. You learn to work with people that you would otherwise never interact with, and you learn that you're all part of the same team. And it's one of the great. For lack of a better term, it's one of the great leveling experiences of life to, to do that. It's a very useful thing. It'll serve you well, and it'll certainly serve you well if you join the, the commission.
Miriam, did you still have a comment that you wanted to make?
Well, I would say, I just, I'm a little uncomfortable with your suggestion, John. As far as I know, he's an adult and he gets to choose which committees he's interested in. And, and there's no availability on the public health committee and he's applied for this committee. So I think we either decide he's appropriate for this committee or not, and then he gets to decide whether he wants to if he's offered the position. I, I just feel like it's much too paternalistic for me.
And I may add, he gets to decide if what I suggested is paternalistic. I mean, I don't need you to characterize it if that's okay.
No, I think it's not okay. I, I, I don't, I don't. Okay. Other people who are coming up here and interviewing for committee positions.
But let's take it down a notch. We're not going to appoint you to anything here tonight. We're interviewing you. And an interview is a two-way street. So thank you very much for your interest in our commission. And we will let you know. Thank you so much.
And you can see that it would be very dangerous to join the select board.
Thank you so much.
Don't apply for this position.
You have military training.
Yeah, maybe you should.
Consider town meeting. Thank you, and thank you for coming in person.
Yes, agreed.
Next interview that we are going to have is Ross Krynsky. Okay, well, we will circle back if he makes himself known. He was interested in the Human Resources Board. Which, do we have vacancies there? So TBD, okay. So Ross Krynsky, if you are listening, please make yourself known to Devon Fields. And we will promote you and interview you. But seeing that he is not present, let's go ahead and take up agenda number eleven. And I'd like to do twelve at the same time. Now, I've checked with town council to see whether or not we can. Kind of combine like an omnibus, doing two license hearings at the same time. We have to do a couple of logistical things. So first I have to check to see if you all are comfortable. With combining the two public hearings, and then we would have to vote to combine them. And then we would open the public hearing, we would hear from the two. Speakers, and then we would ask questions like we normally do. We would open it up for public comment. And then close public comment, and then talk amongst ourselves and then possibly vote. Any comments about what I just proposed? Bernard?
Yeah, I, I guess in this case, it probably will work, but we have to be careful that, you know, where you're trying to combine. Hearings from two, two entities where there are issues that really differ even more so than here. And. In, in many, in those cases, I don't think it'd be appropriate, but maybe here, we can try it out.
Yes, I saw that these were pretty much change of ownership and a transfer of an all kinds. To a package store. I also had Tiffany Souza drop a pretty short and to-the-point memo. On whether or not there were any issues with both license holders. So to your point, Bernard, these are pretty routine and it's a very specific type of license. There don't seem to be any controversies, so I'd like to combine them.
I'm a fan of efficiencies, you know that.
Okay, any other comments about this proposal? So let's move to combine the public hearings for agenda item eleven and twelve. Change of ownership, doing business as pledge of collateral, public hearing. For CCLH, the Inn at Brookline, and also a liquor, all kinds, package store transfer. For Seroso Vino Brookline, doing business as Seroso Market to Ruthie Liquor and Wine. All those in favor of combining the public hearing, say aye. Bernard?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Miriam?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. So now I will open the public hearing for these two licensees. And ask anyone who would like to make a short presentation on either agenda item eleven or twelve.
So it's Stephanie Bedrow on behalf of CCLH LLC. And thank you. We're here on behalf of the licensee. And there's three matters before the board. The first is to change the DBA. And from the, this is the property at twelve hundred Beacon Street, which was the former Holiday Inn, and then the former Inn at Brookline, and it's now known as. The Arcadian Hotel. So the first is to change the DBA to the Arcadian Hotel. And the change of DBA has been filed with the town, and we just like it memorialized for the license. The second is to allow a amended pledge. The license is already pledged to the Brookline Bank. The Brookline Bank and the licensee did a amendment of the existing promissory note, and with that came the amendment of the pledge. So the parties just seek to amend the license to reflect that there isn't a second amended pledge. Which secures the collateral, which is the license. And the third is to memorialize a transfer of the membership interest of CCLH. To Diego Rico, who is now the sole member of the licensed entity. And the board has all of Mr. Rico's information, including the license interview form. And his. His query and all the documents that are required for, for the transfer of the beneficial interest. So those are the three items on behalf of this licensed entity that are before the board that we're looking for approval on by the town.
Great. Any questions on this particular item? Seeing none, maybe we can hear from Nelson Chang on the other item?
Madam Chair, with a record, Attorney Nelson Chang with offices at forty-seven Jackson Street in Sagus, representing the petitioner. Ruthie's Liquors and Wine, seeking the transfer of the liquor license currently held by Sereso Vino Brookline LLC. At twenty-seven Harvard Street, Brookline. The locus is a all-alcohol package store. And we are purchasing the property, excuse me, purchasing the store. My client, Ariane Witten, has extensive experience in the business, well over ten years, currently holds another license in South Boston. He has his query, he has his tips training, he is aware of the specific regulations that you have for retail package store licenses. Property, the store will be purchased for seven hundred and forty-five thousand, and we have financing for New, from Newbury Port Bank of five ninety-six. And the balance will be provided from savings. With respect, we ask that you're, that you grant this particular transfer at this time. If you have any questions, Mr. Witten is here as well as myself.
Great. Any questions for this license holder? Miriam, who's Ruthie? Who's Ruthie?
You're going to have to answer that one.
We like the name.
It's a good name. It's, it's my mother's name, so. Extra points. Mel?
Yes, Mel Kleckner, Town Administrator. I noticed in the application materials that you indicate a pledge of the license, and. I think we made a omission identifying that on the agenda, but I'd want to make sure the board specifically references that. Is that accurate, you pledging the license?
That is correct. As I mentioned, we are being financed by Newbury Port Bank, and they would seek a pledge of the license in the Torrance stock.
Thank you. So to the board, could just make sure it references that along with, similar to what number eleven is also pledging the license.
So would the language be approve the application for a pledge of license?
To the Newbury Port Bank, yeah.
Thank you, Devon. Any questions or comments about either license application? Oh, this is a public hearing. So. I hate to do this to Devon because she's multitasking and getting me the voting language that I need.
Time, there are nineteen attendees and no one has used the hand raise or Q and A feature to indicate. They'd like to make a comment.
Great, we will give it just two more seconds, just in case there's anyone who has trouble finding the raise the hand function feature. But then I will close the public hearing. But do reach out to Devon if.
David Gladstone has been promoted to a panelist. You can unmute and share your video if you're comfortable. Your three minutes will begin.
I don't, I need three minutes. The chamber enthusiastically supports the Arcadian Hotel. As well as the transfer of this liquor license to welcome yet another business owner to the Brookline community. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, David. And if you don't already know David Gladstone, you should. Reach out to him. So no other public comments. I will close the public hearings for both of these agenda items. And let's take the votes for agenda item eleven first, which is the Inn at Brookline. That wants to be known as the Arcadian Hotel. I move approval of the application for a change in doing business as from CCLH LLC. Doing business as the Inn at Brookline to CCLH LLC, doing business as Arcadian Hotel at twelve hundred Beacon Street. All those in favor? Bernard?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Miriam?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. I move the approval of the application for a change of ownership interest for CCLH LLC. Doing business as the Arcadian Hotel at twelve hundred Beacon Street. All those in favor? Bernard?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Miriam?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. And finally, I move approval of the application for a pledge of collateral for CCLH LLC. Doing business as Arcadian Hotel at twelve hundred Beacon Street. All those in favor? Bernard?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Miriam?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Thank you so much and best of luck. And then to agenda item number twelve, I will move. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, thirteen. I move. No worries. Okay, so I will move approval of the application for a transfer of an all-alcohol package store license. From Seroso Vino Brookline LLC, doing business as Seroso Market to Ruthie Liquor and Wine Inc. Doing business as Ruthie Liquor and Wine at twenty-seven Harvard Street, Brookline. Proposed manager will be Arian Litton. All those in favor? Bernard?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Miriam?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. And then finally, I move approval of the application for a pledge of, is it collateral?
Yes.
Okay, pledge of collateral for Ruthie Liquor and Wine Inc. Doing business as Ruthie Liquor and Wine at twenty-seven Harvard Street, Brookline. All those in favor? Bernard?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Miriam?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Thank you and best of luck.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Okay. So we are actually about five minutes ahead of schedule for the warrant article public hearing. So why don't we do this? There is a board and commission appointment at the end of our agenda. I understand that the Preservation Commission, we had a resignation and we have an alternate who would like to be a full member. And so we have the opportunity to make that appointment here tonight. Any questions? I believe it is Elizabeth Armstrong. Who would be appointed to a three-year term expiring in twenty twenty-five. Wendy Ecker? Move to Maine. Any discussion before I move this language? Okay, I move approval of appointing Elizabeth Armstrong to a three-year term expiring in twenty twenty-five. To the Preservation Commission. All those in favor? Bernard?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Miriam?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Article fourteen, special permit conditions. Does anybody remember what that actually is?
It has to do with.
Bikes?
No, 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 putting permits on, conditions on permits requiring community involvement and, and notice and things like that.
Okay, I assume Melissa is at advisory.
She may be here. If not, anybody from planning here?
Okay, no worries.
Yeah, I think.
I, I think I could explain a little bit about this.
Sure, John, take it away until we have staff.
Having said that, somebody's going to have to jump in immediately and correct me if I'm wrong. Does, does this pertain to? The history we've had of some recent, you know, issues in Hancock Village. I'm not saying it directly references that. But it does seem to speak to that, that if you look at the underlying language. That it, it calls for a construction liaison to be identified for certain projects. Within thirty days of when the construction activity is to commence, and then there, that there be twice monthly product, project status updates. Excuse me, and lookaheads, and that the community liaison shall be a town meeting member in the impacted precinct. Or a resident living within a quarter-mile radius of the, of the project. So I, I make the reference to the Hancock Village situation just because I think it'll help to set the context of. How, how these things have been of some concern, and this might be just a. how these things have been of some concern. And this might be just an addition to initial method of kind of keeping an eye on projects.
Was this a department-sponsored warrant article?
Yes, this is coming from the Department of Planning and.
Oh, interesting.
Yeah. Oh, sorry, I'm looking at the amendment. Okay, I beg your pardon.
Miriam?
This is not related to that. I do support that. I mean, John and I have been kind of acting as point people for what's been happening in Hancock Village with Nolan. But I have a request, which is Mariah Nubrega, as we all know, has been flat out with. Right? And she needs to be here for warrant article 12 discussion and vote. So I'm just asking that maybe we can prioritize that so she can go to sleep.
Okay.
I mean, it's a reasonable request because she's been.
But we are probably going to take Kent Street first.
Okay, I'm just putting that on your.
There are a number of people signed up specifically for that. And I couldn't start it before 7:15.
Yeah.
So I'm trying to get something done in the meantime.
No, I know.
And that's, that's going to be a longer conversation than five minutes.
I was just putting a plug in because.
I appreciate it. Sure.
14.
Oh, 14, yeah.
Oh, hi. Sorry, I'm sure. Hi, I'm Danielle De Silva, town meeting member, precinct 16. I'm not sure how this works. I've never participated in putting an amendment or being involved in a warrant process. So this is my first time, but I just wanted Carolyn Thall and I sort of co-sponsored the amendment to it. She's on here too, I see her. And just wanted to just take a minute to explain, I think, why we were hoping that we could add that language in. We're so thankful that this is up for consideration in general, and we've seen such huge movement in terms of community involvement in specifically Hancock Village. But for us, it felt that one thing that was missing from this, from this article was the specific prescription for community involvement in the project. And that sort of a reference point, we were looking at the position description for the recently created position, and I know that's moving forward. We're starting to work, work with a group around that for the construction liaison in Hancock Village. And it just seems that for those of us who have been living here, it would just be really appreciated and also would save, I think, a lot of time for the town. As it is right now, whenever we've had problems, I'm sure many of you are familiar with me and with my neighbors. There tends to be a chain and email communications, lots of things that are happening, and we're on the ground, so we're seeing what's happening. But not everyone else is. And so we've had to notify so many different people, and then this person has to notify this person. It takes a lot of time. And I think it would be efficient, helpful, and it would go a long way towards making any community in the future impacted by major construction feel that they, they have a voice and that they're informed. That could be a person that would be helpful for two-way communication. Just to give a quick example, I just came home tonight and there was a sign up that said the road wasn't opened. I think it was open. I drove on it, but apparently there's, you know, not anywhere to park. And also there was wet cement on the ground in front of my house. I had to, so that's not stuff that I think has been communicated very well. And I think that in future, this would be a great place for that to come from within and for people who are impacted by these projects to feel that they have something, they have some sort of say in their, their own daily lives around it. So I also just think that it would be good government and it would help in terms of the time spent. And I'm happy to answer any questions if you do have them about, about why we wanted it.
I, I think we do have some questions, but I also want to see if we have anyone from our planning department. Oh.
Oh, they are.
Excellent. That really helps. And just a tip for next time, lead with that. If the original petitioner is okay with your amended language, that always makes it a little bit easier for people to say, oh, okay.
I hadn't heard from, from, from anybody personally.
Okay, okay. Mike first and then John?
Sure.
Okay.
The one question I have is you've got a requirement that the liaison person be a town meeting member or and or a resident living within a quarter mile radius of the project. And as long as it's not and, that's okay, because a quarter mile radius of the project is not very far away. And in fact, it might, depending on where you put the pin for the project, for that project, you wouldn't even reach to Putaham. It's right on the edge of a quarter mile. So I do think you want to give some thought to the, to the quarter mile, but I suppose if it says and or.
Could you say the project limits?
Well, yeah, that's probably a good way to do it. Quarter mile of the project limits. Because that way you get the boundary of the project instead of the dead center of or where the developers is at.
Just a, just a thought. John?
Well, actually, my question was answered, which is that the planning and the community development department is in favor of the amendments. And I just want to thank the neighbors for their patience in not just sort of the immediate needs that they felt over the recent months, you know, in, in dealing with many of us and with the administrative staff at Town Hall and them, but also in following through to try to put into practice a better way of dealing with these issues in the future. It's, it's going to be well worthwhile to smooth out what, what has been a little bit of a, if you'll forgive the expression, a rocky relationship. So thank you.
Any other comments from select board members? I do see Cara Bruton and I see a special guest as well. I don't know, Cara, if you want to say anything further about why you support this amendment.
Sure, I'll just add that the language that Carolyn and others have brought forward still provides the flexibility that we might need in any particular situation. Just as a reminder to the board, all of this language is explicitly giving authorization to the zoning board of appeals to write such a condition, but it doesn't limit them to, to any of this language. It just kind of gives ideas and it has the effect of giving developers a heads up that such conditions could be made, but the ZBA still has entire flexibility of writing any subset or any bigger, larger or smaller condition. This, this works with us.
Great. The petitioners of the amendment, do you have any other comments that you would like to make? It really makes everyone's job easier when petitioners or people who are filing an amendment work with the original petitioner or town staff so that everybody is in agreement. So I'm appreciative of that work.
I'll just say I'm appreciative of Cara's work with a few of us in precinct 16 on this and the select board members who have sort of stuck with this as we've tried to make lots of progress that we're very grateful for, specific to Hancock Village. And of course, this is not about Hancock Village. This is for others in the future, just very briefly to Mike's comment about the quarter mile. I just kind of threw that out there, but because this is really not about Hancock Village, but about other major impact projects later, I just assumed that there's probably no place else in town where, where a quarter mile would feel very big or very far from, from a sort of point of impact. So that's just my explanation, but, but indeed it was a little bit random too. But thank you.
Would you be willing to change the language to project limits? I think it, it would save some, some back and forth about what the intent is.
Absolutely. Whatever you guys and Cara think.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Any other comments from select board members? I believe this is probably ready for a vote. Miriam?
Just quickly, I, I want to say that, you know, we learned some lessons with Hancock Village and I think it's really, you know, I try to find silver linings. And for me, a silver lining is that we've learned this lesson and we can now, you know, I say no better, do better. And to me, that's what this is. This is a chance for us to do better as we continue to, you know, have building projects around town.
Great. Thank you very much for all of your work on this. Bernard?
And although Hancock Village has been a thorn inside of many residents, this is much broader than just Hancock Village, as people have said. And remember, the project up at Washington and Corey Road, which is also relevant to this and the upcoming project in Coolidge Corner at, at Durgan.
Waldo Durgan. Yeah, I was thinking that.
It's gonna be a project that's gonna be very disruptive and this, this warrant article is gonna be a very, very important way of dealing with some of the
Yeah.
problems that would otherwise occur there.
I've told Lauren Bernard she'll owe me lunch.
Okay, let's move this language so that we can get to the other warrant articles that we have to dispense with tonight. So I will move reconsideration of warrant article 14, because I think we already voted on it. All those in favor? Bernard?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Miriam?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. And now I will move favorable action on the amended motion as put forward by Carolyn Thall and Danielle De Silva with a slight language change to project limits. All those in favor? Bernard?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Miriam?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Good luck with the AC. Okay.
Thank you so much.
We are going to circle back to Agenda Item 13, which is a public hearing on warrant article 30, a resolution regarding Kent Street Station. I will open the public hearing and wonder if Jeff Walker or Roger Blood might want to update us on the current status of this resolution and its language. Hi, Jeff. So I'll, I'll leave it to you to decide whether you want to go first or if you want to let Roger.
I can, I can start and Roger can fill in any gaps that I, that I may leave out. So throughout this process, as usually happens with these, with these sorts of articles and resolutions, there's been a handful of changes. The intent of this article has always been to create a, create a path forward for the affordable senior housing to ultimately give at the Kent Station Street parking lot right next to the Brooklyn Village. Through the hearings, we've heard a great deal from the business community in Brooklyn Village who currently use those, the vast majority of those spaces during the daytime for employee parking. And while our intent was never to eliminate any, any substantial amount of parking, it was just to provide flexibility. They've made it clear that, that it would all, that this whole process would move much more smoothly if, if we could adjust the language in order to create some certainty that as the process moves forward and ultimately results in, in housing, that the 37 merchant, merchant parking spaces be maintained. If not on site, then very close by so that their employees benefit from that. So the advisory, advisory committee proposed some language. The petitioners had a couple edits. The merchants came back with a couple edits of their own. We ultimately came to what I believe is compromised language that, that I believe was, has been circulated with the select board that calls for a new RFP, which will have to go out for this housing, to only move forward once the transportation board has, has identified and secured parking for, for these merchant spaces. Moving forward. So that's, that's the gist of the, of the updates. I'll let Roger fill in whatever I likely left out.
Great. Roger?
Thanks, Jeff. Roger Blood, Chair of the Housing Advisory Board, the HAB had a hearing and discussion about warrant article 30 and unanimously voted to support the article. It had an original form that have expressed concerns at that time about the needs of the business community and the continuing needs for parking, especially for the employees of Brooklyn Village businesses. So that the current version that you have before you, as Jeff described, is entirely consistent with what the HAB has recommended for favorable action to, to town meeting. Like to just to give positive recognition to the advisory subcommittee for taking an original article and working really hard on it at that level to, to make it acceptable to all of the stakeholders and yet still hopefully produce the senior affordable housing that's so desperately needed. And also to Todd Corain for stepping forward and taking some positive creative action in ad advisory and suggesting ways that we might, might find that we could go forward. And also to Jeff Wacker, the original petitioner, working cooperatively to get to the version of the article that you, you have before you. There's a, there's a, a long saga to this. As, as most of you know, in 2016, the housing production plan for the town suggested that we explore the opportunity to put affordable housing, affordable senior housing over one or more municipal parking lots. The Kent Station Street was chosen as a, as a pilot for successive required committees then served to, to develop the RFP, to take community input, to issue and evaluate the RFP and finally to negotiate with the winning proposed developer sponsor, which happened to be Two Life. I know Heather Hamilton has been on this in a leadership role since almost the very beginning of, of this, this idea. We always knew that the parking component and the requirement for keeping the parking was going to be a challenge and very costly. And we thought we were at the verge of still having a feasible project going forward, but at, very late in the game, several reasons, including the excessive costs for public-related construction caused the, the amount of the subsidy that was going to be required from the town to, to go well north of $200,000 a unit. And that's, that's about double of anything that the trust fund and the town has used local resources to make other projects feasible. We, we do think that this article provides a possible avenue and it's possible, it's, it's not, not guaranteed by any means to not give up on this project, to move it forward to where there will be another bite of the apple by you all and by town meeting, certainly before a valuable municipal property is used for other additional ways. And so I would, would highly recommend that you you, you get a good look at this and, and take favorable action and, and return to the advisory committee, which at this point, the full committee, as you may know, had a, had a split vote with a, with a tiebreaker for the moment from the, from the chair, but we think that with some more discussion, there could be a favorable way to do this, which involves a portion of the retained parking spaces to be for the business community employees to be designated or located by, by the transportation staff. Eventually EDAB with their representation for the business community would need to approve this as a prerequisite before going to any, any second RFP from, from private, private sponsors. So there's, there's still quite a pathway on this. We've, we've had a, one last, the only last thing I'll mention, some further analysis, both of the legal issues relating to the construction costs and the, the way of approaching the property with the parking on site. And, and at this point, I'm happy to say we're optimistic on both fronts, on both of these different challenges. The, the legal requirements are creating very high costs that there will be a way to, to, to avoid that. And that also, we believe that roughly half of the 39 spaces can feasibly be retained. can feasibly be retained back on the site. So looking for street parking will not be as tall of an order as if it was all needed to be moved off the site. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Roger. This is a public hearing. I know a number of people have signed up to speak. So I want to expedite that by moving along to those who have notified Devon that they would like to make a public comment. So let's go to them.
The first person signed up for public comment is Paul Sainer. You've been promoted to a panelist. You can unmute and your three minutes will begin.
Thank you very much, Devon. Good evening, everyone. I'm Paul Sainer, one of the co-chairs of the Economic Development Advisory Board, and I am speaking in favor of this compromise resolution. I voted no at the EDAB public hearing on April 4th, when EDAB's vote was a rather odd zero to three to four. The explanation for that is that we felt that we didn't have all of the information. And in fact, the following week, the negotiation committee report came out with late breaking news that Roger referenced relative to some legal findings that dramatically impacted the pro forma. My EDAB has not met since then. I have worked very closely with my co-chair Anne Myers. And in fact, yesterday, we were on a call with a number of the Brookline Village leadership, as well as David Gladstone. And some additional edits, the petitioners kindly agreed to, to the resolve clause to hopefully get everybody on board with this compromise. Anne has allowed me to reference that she also spoke, she also voted no at the EDAB hearing. And like me, she is very supportive of this compromise. EDAB is very supportive of affordable housing in our commercial centers. EDAB in 2016 voted for the resolution to study the Kent Station Street law with the proviso that the spaces be retained. That vote was rather reluctant because EDAB believes fundamentally that a more holistic approach should be taken to examine at least the parking supply, including other municipal lots in a commercial district and other parking related issues before targeting a specific lot for redevelopment. And in fact, going back more than 20 years, that was done at the Webster Street Lot that ultimately the town was able to, from an economic development point of view, redevelopment as the Marriott Courtyard. That was only done after looking at all available lots in the Coolidge Corner District.
You have 30 seconds.
So the EDAB is not particularly in favor of Babcock Street. We feel that now more than ever, it's incumbent to look holistically because of the very effective COVID response the town has made relative to outdoor dining as well as parklets. In closing, I urge you to listen very closely to the small businesses that will be talking about the importance of parking to their livelihood. And I urge you to please vote unanimously for this compromise resolution. Thank you very much.
The next person in line for public comment is Melissa Goldman. You've been promoted to a panelist. You can unmute and your three minutes will begin.
Thank you, Devon. I'm Melissa Tapper Goldman. I'm here to give some context for warrant Article 30. Some of you know me. I'm a founder of the Village Works Co-Working Space in Brookline Village. And I've been a business owner in Brookline for seven years. I also serve on the Small Business Development Committee for the town. And I'm one of the founding organizers of the Brookline Village Business Association. I also worked on the letter from the BVBA about this warrant article that summarized some of the issues on, about parking and access in Brookline Village and how we've run out of solutions given the tools currently available. I hope that you'll take the time to read that letter. Also, it has been circulated. But today I'm speaking as myself. I first want to thank everyone who's engaged so thoughtfully in this conversation so far. I'm asking you to make it your business to understand why the Kent Street Lot Commercial Parking is so important to small businesses in Brookline Village. It provides a solution that's totally unavailable anywhere else in the village. Removing the business parking in part or in full, even temporarily, would have enormous negative consequences for Brookline Village. And I'm asking you to look at the bigger picture. If this development project fails to move forward, it's due to broader unaddressed access problems in Brookline Village. Restoring the Kent Street Lot Parking is a large burden to put on a small project. You might say it's not fair and unsuitable, given the challenges of this particular site. But if the parking is reduced, the problems that this project would create are very real and compound much bigger existing challenges in the village. If we addressed Brookline Village's parking problem head on, the town could make rational choices about what to do with individual parcels. Until there's a plan for parking and access in the village, the burden to fix a systemic issue will always fall on individual projects, making them appear to fail individually. If the town is serious about the vital goal of creating more affordable housing, the follow through is creating the necessary infrastructure for that additional density. The town could solve multiple problems at once. For example, by investing in a meter rate parking structure similar to the Green Street Garage in Cambridge, then projects like this one could proceed at a more accessible cost.
You have 30 seconds.
On the question of what the town supports and subsidizes, all roads, parking spaces, sidewalks, bike lanes, EV charging stations, and even air rights are actively subsidized according to the priorities of the town. As someone who runs a business in Brookline Village and someone who serves this town on the Small Business Development Committee, I do not want to stand in the way of affordable housing. What I'd love to see is a Brookline Village with a more rational infrastructure that can make this possible.
The next person signed up for public comment is Susan Healy. You've been promoted to a panelist. You can unmute and your three minutes will begin.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Susan Healy and I'm the owner of HC Studio, a hair salon located on Station Street. And I've been part of the business community for 22 years now. And I thank you all for listening to me tonight. And I'll just ask each of you here this evening to take a moment and just think about your favorite business in your neighborhood, one that you frequent often and love going to. Whatever that business is, I'm sure that when you frequent this business, a key part of the experience is interacting with the people that work there. And most likely, you are not thinking about how many employees work there or where they live, how they get to work, or even where they park. The reality is that all of your favorite businesses hire enough people to accommodate the needs of its community. I personally employ 18 people. Many employees cannot afford to live in Brookline Village or even the surrounding areas, and such is the case with my business. I have employees that travel from Providence, Harvard, Hanover, Situate, Milton, Rosendale, Fitchburg, Walpole, and Worcester. And they all rely heavily on being able to park here. Many evenings, we work until 9:30 and Kent Street Lot is safe, centrally located, and is well witted. Most of my team have been with me for over 15 years and they are now fearful that they will not be able to continue working here. Now, that's a tough blow and hard to hear as a business owner. And I'm gonna lose the core of my team because the town is considering taking parking away? There are 56 businesses and their employees that oppose this original article. As a matter of fact, I've yet to find one business that supports this original article. We need to work together and build affordable housing while protecting the business community. Both are equally important. As our community continues to grow, it's irresponsible and short sight not to consider the ramifications of taking parking away. We cannot even afford to lose one spot. Existed, existing metered parking takes away from customers and side streets just compete with teachers. We have a shortage in parking. And as the business community is starting to emerge from COVID, we are faced with a labor crisis right now that is very real and is harder than ever to find help. Wages are up and candidates are few and far between. And when a candidate is considering working for me, the first question they ask is where can I park? And I ask you to please allow me to have an answer to that question. This is about survival. And if the original article is passed, it will most definitely break down the existing business community and deter new businesses from coming here. Article 34 was supported by residents and businesses alike, and we support affordable housing.
You have 30 seconds.
Saying that merchant spots be free or subsidized in any way. We just need spaces. So when considering Article 30 tonight, please consider the following. Keeping all 37 parking spaces in a safe, well-witted area that is centrally located and have this parking identified and secured before the project happens. Do not take any metered parking. Perform a parking impact study that will determine the real parking needs of the community and factor in future demands as we continue to grow and develop as a village. And more metered parking on side streets abutting in the business district. Find alternative parking solutions for merchants during construction projects and allow minimal spots for construction workers and have the developers bus construction workers into the village daily so they do not disrupt the business community and
You've reached three minutes.
Thank you for your consideration.
The next person signed up for public comment is Sarah Petras. You've been promoted to a panelist. You can unmute and your three minutes will begin.
Hi there. Thank you for listening to my comments. My name is Sarah Petras. I am the owner of Cado Boutique and Gallery at 214 Washington Street in the Village. I just want to note that what Melissa had said about the Green Street Parking Lot in Cambridge was exactly something I was also thinking of with regards to some kind of structure in Brookline Village as we see so much development happening with the medical buildings and the potential of new biotech building coming. Anyway, I'm gonna get to my note, so forgive me if I just read this directly. I have, I've been in business for 10 months only. I have been a customer of HC Studios for 12 years. I also lived in Coolidge Corner for 13 years. I chose to open my business in the village due to the vibrancy and uniqueness of commerce here. So I took a leap of faith in the midst of a global pandemic on a vibrant town center with good support from town officials. I believe the town of Brookline should advocate for small business and employee parking specifically because A, the Kent Street Lot is critical for my staff. They drive from afar, most, all of them actually. Public transportation is not an option or it takes far too long. My manager Teresa, she is a single mother of two kids under the age of five and lives in Braintree. If she took the MBTA, it would take her two hours plus and then she wouldn't be able to pick up her children in her car seats after work. Janet lives in Norwood. She's 72 years old, 30 years of retail experience. Her expertise has been my lifeline throughout the pandemic. If she took the MBTA, it would take her three hours because she's far away from the station gym. Megan lives in Southborough, 15 years of retail experience and no options for the MBTA. I have not been able to find employees at this time despite sending out countless job posts and three, on three different platforms. Finding staff members with this level of qualification who live close to Brookline, which has prohibitive cost of living is very, very difficult. I have not been successful. If my staff cannot park, they will not be able to work for me and I cannot afford to lose them. If staff parking is assigned to metered spaces, that will further confuse customers, like the meters that are marked on Kent Street. My customers often will park there and then get ticketed and will gobble up the precious customer parking options. I previously ran a boutique in Chestnut Hill called Portobello Road. By opening my boutique in the village, I've brought customers with me. These customers that drive, these are customers that drive into Brookline Village from Wayland, Wellesley, Dedham, Weston, North Andover, Cohasset, and the list goes on. These customers are thrilled to be learning more about the village and are excited to patronize other local businesses here.
You have 30 seconds.
Parking's difficult for them. I hope to not make it worse. I continue to try and find parking alternatives through Craigslist, but it's very inconsistent. I'd be happy to pay for it, but there aren't enough offerings. My manager signed up for the waitlist for a parking space at Town Hall, but the waiting list is months long. We won't receive an update until July. When I made the decision to come to the village, it was based partly on the Kent Street Lot. Lastly, it's disappointing to feel pitted against, pitted against affordable senior housing, particularly as I imagine the project chose this location so shops would be accessible to these residents. It would be a delight to welcome this wonderful group as well as their friends and family. Those friends and family, however, will only further tax the tenuous parking situation if they cannot come, if we cannot come to an equitable parking arrangement.
You've reached three minutes.
Thanks.
The next person signed up for public comment is Liz Linder.
Is this how I do it? Great. Thank you for hearing me. I'm touching the screen, pardon me. I'm here to offer some history and look ahead. As an abutting resident and owner of Liz Linder Photography in the Village for the past 20 years and also newly elected town meeting member for Precinct 4, I was involved in warrant Article 34 back in 2016. I joined committees and worked with some of you to work up an RFP and select a developer. He runs such a tight meeting, Heather. I brought the neighborhood into conversation and we came to support the project. Warrant Article 34 proposed a winning solution to preserve essential parking by developing affordable housing above town-owned lots. The Kent Station Street Lot was targeted as an initial site. Given a small footprint and that the building be designed to scale within a historic area, the RFP substituted air rights with a requirement to replace onsite parking of 39 spots for community use. It seemed a fair exchange at the time, but fast forward six years to warrant Article 30. 30 gives the selected developer the option to eliminate or reduce the central parking spaces at their discretion to close a budget gap. It pits affordable housing against parking while neglecting context and community. It cites alternate parking options that don't exist. The original petition is based on misinformation and simplistic moralistic appeals and as such is irresponsible, the fallout of which will imperil brick and mortar businesses locally. Following significant involvement and concern as business owners and associations got wind of this, it appears a proposed rewrite corrects facts and requires due diligence via a parking study and a promise to replace spaces for business use. To visualize 39 spaces, this is equivalent to usable metered spots up Harvard Street between Washington and Aspen Wall. I just checked. Imagine how the village would function with that parking suddenly removed. How will the business community, still dealing with economic fallout from COVID, continue to recover? Warrant Article 34 would not have been considered if it eliminated or redistributed parking since it was based on preservation of parking to begin with. The business community and residents like myself who don't own off-street parking rely on these spaces to function. Currently, my employees and clients frequent each other, frequent other establishments locally. A bite, a gift, a haircut, another appointment, meeting friends for the above. Imagine losing employees or clients because they can't find parking, which has compounding effects. I don't have to imagine this. Without available parking, I will need to reconsider where to locate my business. A compromise would include language to identify suitable replacement spots beforehand. Could there be a deck above the Kent Webster Street Lot, for instance? A compromise would mandate in the RFP that the developer manages construction workers off-site parking.
You have 30 seconds.
And it would protect current parking for customers and visitors. Warrant Article 30 in its original form violates the trust of the community and brings into question original intent. The unintended consequences in my mind are too great a cost with too little benefit for such a small space. A rewrite of warrant Article 30 must reflect with integrity the realities of the community it proposes to serve. As institutional memory fades quickly, town meeting members will vote with Brookline Village in the balance and we need specifics and guarantees as opposed to vagaries and aspirations. Thank you for your attention. It's still unclear to me which version of 30 will be presented.
The next person signed up for public comment is David Gladstone. You've been promoted to a panelist. You can unmute and your three minutes will begin.
Thank you, Devon. Select Board members, Mel, and guests. First and foremost, I'd like to congratulate our newest select board member who just got elected in. Congratulations and welcome. My name is David Gladstone. I'm a long-term resident of Precinct 16, president of the chamber, member of the Small Business Development Committee, and a member of the CPC US Open Planning Committee and a former retailer for 15 years, as well as a current business banker in Brookline. As a business banker, I've done 150 PPP loans and many of these, these businesswomen speaking tonight, I'm their banking banker, full disclosure. I've been in banking since 2001 and have in addition, supported many businesses during both good times and during times where there's been major headwinds. Well, we've heard many things from these businesswomen tonight. Let's see if you heard what I heard. Making, from Melissa Goldman, owner of the Village Works. Making your business to understand why Kent Street Parking is so important to the health and vibrancy of the business district. Unaddressed parking problems in the village. Systematic parking issues. Address future density issues caused by development. Meter rate structure for pricing. Proposed project without an impact study is irresponsible and is a poor business plan before any spaces are decided to be removed. From Sue Healy, owner of From Sue Healy, owner of the HC Studio for twenty-two years on Station Street. Think of your favorite business in the village. Where does all of her employees live and how do they commute to the salon? From Worcester, Milton, Rosendale, Fitchburg, Providence. Employees are fearful of not enough parking and would question whether it would be rational to maintain employment after working for Susan in a salon for fifteen years. No study before the removal of parking under the original article is unthinkable. Shortage of parking and how to find additional safe and secure parking for her employees, who are all young women who work late into the evening with their hair salon clients. Major shortage of people who want to work. Major hiring shortage. From Sarah Petras, owner of Cadoo. Took a leap of faith because of the vibe of the village. Staff driving to Brookline from outside of town. Needed spaces used by many of her customers. If we took the meters without a study, it could impact her customer traffic count. Customers will stop coming in if the parking is unbearable. Success of her business depends upon support from the town, town meeting, and customers. Liz Linda, professional photographer in the village, long-term resident in the village and newly elected TMM. Congratulations. Offered the history of the old Article thirty-four, which guaranteed no removal of parking spaces
You have thirty seconds.
Winning situation by leveraging air rights to build affordable housing units. Business owners, employees depend upon the available parking at Kent Street, which allow all-day parking. Too hard a time to find parking outside of the Kent Street Lot. One thing indeed, which I want to reiterate here, is that all of us are supportive of affordable housing. This is what I heard. I hope that the current vibrancy and contributions our locally owned businesses create in the village allows us to take pause and learn what the realities on the ground today in the village truly are. We urge the Select Board as well as TM to pass and vote in the revised version of the article requiring a thorough study to find replacement spaces to ensure no further damages are done.
You've reached three minutes.
Thank you.
At this time, there are twenty-four attendees virtually and one in person. No one is using the hand raise or Q and A feature to indicate they'd like to make a comment.
Okay. One of the challenges about warrant articles is that it is a constantly moving target all the way up until we actually debate the warrant article on the floor of town meeting or sometimes the virtual floor. So I get that a lot of people are responding to, I think, what was the original filed warrant article, but there have been some changes. I wonder if Jeff might put on the screen what the current iteration is. And Devin, if you could promote Todd Corain, I'm sure that there are going to be lots of questions about the parking.
Can everyone see this right now?
Yes. I think the most important part of this is probably the therefore. But before you read that, Jeff, I just want to say a few words about the original warrant article that was filed in two thousand and sixteen. It was one of my very first assignments when I got elected to the board. And I have to say, it was probably my favorite thing that I've done on this board. I really enjoyed working on that committee with all the committee members, including Liz. And that's how we met, actually. And I'm hearing from the neighbors and the businesses and whatnot. I think warrant Article thirty-four in its intent or in its efforts to try to address something that is very critical, which is affordable housing. And this particular situation for seniors, it tried to have its cake and eat it too. In order to pass and not be controversial, it said, oh, but we're gonna, we're gonna preserve the parking. Easier said than done, turns out, five years later. Any, any structured parking in an urban environment really starts to ratchet up the cost of the project. And, you know, we had a couple of bids. The subsidy amount that they said that they were going to need were, was over five million dollars, which was a lot of money. And that was in two thousand and nineteen. And now inflation and the, the supply chain for materials, it's easily doubled, which makes this project basically unaffordable for us to subsidize. So I, I get the intent of trying to preserve this project and, and try to deal with the parking. The parking is a very important part of any business community. But I also want to acknowledge what our current meter rate is in Brookline. You pay a dollar twenty-five per hour, which is way lower than our neighboring cities in Cambridge and Boston. The Green Street Lot, from what I was able to find, that was mentioned by two public comments, for one to two hours, the rate is eight dollars. I, I have been in favor of addressing our very subsidized meter rate, in my opinion, so that we can deal with turnover rates at meters. I think that we are pricing it too low, and that has led to why there is such a crunch on top of all of the construction projects that were going on there over the past couple of years. I'm gonna stop there, have Jeff read the therefore clause, then I'm going to open it up to a Select Board Members to share their thoughts.
Thank you, Heather. So after much negotiation, as Roger has mentioned as well, therefore clause that we've kind of, that we've come to reads, therefore be it resolved that this town meeting urges the town to pursue affordable senior rental housing on the Kent Station Street site in a manner that is cost efficient for the town. A revised RFP will be issued only after the Town's Department of Planning and Community Development and the Transportation Board, after appropriate study, have secured adequate sites during construction and upon completion for the thirty-seven permitted merchant full day public parking spaces and two zip car spaces currently located on the Kent Station Street Lot, whether or not located on the site. And with only potentially removing a limited number of metered public parking spaces currently available in Brookline Village. Adequacies shall be determined by the Transportation Board and EDAB after holding public hearings.
So I will open it up to Select Board Members. Mike, you might want to mention the other appointments that you
Yes, I'm about to do that. Actually, I was sort of, at the beginning of this discussion, by virtue of having been previously Chair of the Transportation Board, which got involved in this fairly early on. And I, the motivation of the original article was, Article thirty-four was to utilize town-owned property in a way that basically did double duty. Preserve parking for a parking lot and use the space above it for, in this case, senior affordable housing. And it was intended to be a model for other parking, other parking lots, perhaps. It was also assumed that the surface parking would be retained, the building would basically be raised. When it, when you actually looked at all of the other things that were promised, for example, a way for pedestrians to pass through from Station Street to Kent, back and forth, that took a little slice out of the available surface. When you, when you look at the setbacks that were provided for the, the adjacent residential properties, that took a little slice. And so what you end up with is the inability to retain all of those spaces unless you go underground, which becomes very, very expensive. I do think that it's clear that some of what we heard was prepared before the proposed amendment was brought forward, and I am very pleased to see that proposed amendment. What I take away from all of that is that the revised resolution that Jeff Walker just put up would be acceptable to the business owners who, who spoke this evening. I do think we need to be certain in advance of construction that the total number of spaces that are supposed to be retained have been identified by the Transportation Division. So I'd be very interested to hear what Todd Corain can tell us about that, and I appreciate that. At this point, it's something he has to think about, not that he has an answer to. With regard to bringing construction workers in by bus, I think that's a great idea. It sounds good. But we also need to know in advance how that will go about. Where will they park? And how will that happen? And I do think that it's not just construction workers, but rather the equipment and materials and so forth that we need to be looking at in order to make sure that there's, there will be some disruption. It's inevitable, but that that disruption is minimized from construction and the impact on parking in particular is minimized. And last, if the project goes forward, and I certainly hope it will, it will be a perfect test, test base, test case for the provision we just voted for in Article fourteen, because there indeed should be an active liaison committee from the business and residential community to work with the developer. I do think that this is a developer who will have a very open mind and a willingness to work with, with the community.
Great. Before we have Todd respond, let's just go through all the Select Board Members that have questions or comments. John.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you to all who worked so hard on this article, not just in the present form, but, you know, over the years to get us to today. So a week ago, I, you know, made kind of an extraordinary request to please be appointed to the Small Business Development Committee. And the reason I gave for doing that is that I've been doing a lot of watching of and following of, and when I can, offering of help to the small business community and the business community in general in Brookline. I love doing it. I'm happy to do it. And I think frankly, in this instance, they need our help more than ever because something, something has happened, which unfortunately, all of a sudden takes what was promised to be a development that would keep in place parking spaces that are very crucial to this, this Brookline Village business community. And all of a sudden, what was promised to be retention of those spaces is turned around and all of a sudden it becomes, well, no, we didn't actually, we weren't, we weren't able to do that. So now we're going to take what was, what was passed, what was adopted by town meeting on the promise that there would be spaces retained and turn it into a proposal to go ahead without the spaces retained. I would also point out, by the way, that this has implications for the work to go forward on what was adopted a year ago insofar as the future of the Babcock Street parking lot. Because that article was adopted by town meeting on the language that the same RFP that was used in the Kent Street process would be followed as a model in the Babcock Street process. So now you have the Babcock Street process premised on an RFP promise that retained parking onsite, and now we're changing that promise. So I don't even know where that leaves the Babcock Street process. But I do know that the, the Kent Station Street process has arrived at a point where the only way we can go ahead and, and have a viable proposal to build the housing is if we rely on the promise that somewhere there will be found thirty-nine parking spaces in a, in an area where nobody is saying we have parking spaces to spare, and somehow that won't have an impact on either the merchants or the customers or the residents nearby. This is a commercial area that is, you know, shoulder to shoulder with residential areas. And I have driven around it during periods before COVID, and parking spaces, they are really hard to find. You can circle and circle and circle before you find one on Kent Street, on Station Street, on Harvard Street, on Washington Street. So it's not like we're, you know, overflowing with parking spaces to spare. I don't know where they're going to find this additional thirty-nine, but I do think it's going to come at a cost either to customers of these businesses or to inconvenience of the merchants and their ability to hire help, retain help. And I also think this, as I said, has implications for a study going forward on Babcock. And I also want to ask, and here's my, my most important point perhaps, I've heard it said tonight that actually we can locate twenty spaces on the site, but that's not in the language of the, the resolution, the therefore paragraph that was just read to us. It doesn't say there will be twenty located onsite and the remaining nineteen will be located, you know, through the good work of Todd Corain, somewhere offsite. It says, we'll try to find spaces offsite or maybe on for thirty-nine spaces that we're losing. And if people want to adopt the promise that twenty of the spaces will be onsite, perhaps there should be an amendment offered to the language that's in front of us tonight to say twenty will be onsite and we will then put the burden on Todd of finding nineteen offsite. But I don't see much point in bringing up that twenty if we're not going to lock it into the language that we vote on.
I have a response to that.
Hold on, Mike. There are other, there are other Select Board Members and I want to give them an opportunity to speak. Miriam or Bernard?
Mary.
I'm just gonna say I'm very thankful to have passed the Babcock Street Committee over to you.
Mike.
Okay, so I, I guess I'm mystified it. At this stage, it's not possible to identify exactly where those spaces are going to be preserved, whether nineteen, eighteen, seventeen, twenty can be preserved onsite. That would be great. That would certainly reduce the difficulty of finding the additional spaces on the street. The way the commercial parking permit, permits are set up, sixty percent of the spaces, the actual spaces along the street, that twenty-foot-long parking spaces.
Non-meter.
Non-meter, thank you, are reserved for residents. And the question is, well, is that, can that be modified? And what would be the effect, what's the net increase in, in commercial spaces that would be available? Which way too early to start trying to define and constrain this in any way other than to say, this needs to, we need to identify the spaces in advance, which is what I said when I made my remarks. So I would urge you to vote for this on the basis that if the spaces can't be identified, then no deal. This doesn't work. And we don't really know what happens to the Kent Street project, except that it doesn't get built as it's currently envisioned.
I will also add that my past experience serving on this board for five years and then town meeting before that, you get yourself into trouble when you put numbers in a warrant article that passes because it does not allow you for flexibility as new information comes about. Any other comments? Bernard?
It was my understanding that what Mike just said was in fact what we're talking about, and it seemed to be a little confusion here. I mean, if we can't find the parking spaces either onsite or offsite, the project doesn't go through. That's horrible, but that's the reality we face in this market economy that we're, we're living in.
And my understanding is there are potentially two public hearings once we have a proposal, which would be at the Transportation Board and then also EDAB and probably the Select Board, let's be honest. Miriam, did you have a comment?
No, I'm just with, I'm with Bernard on this. And in the warrant article as is revised, I have no problem with that. I mean, it is, it is about a process. So I don't see any reason why we don't go forward with the
So there, there's still some questions surrounding our ability to identify the potential parking spaces and what that process would look like, and then the public process that would be used to present whatever we determine. Todd Corain, I believe, has limited bandwidth, so we may only just get his audio.
How you doing? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, sorry about that. I'm on vacation today and trying to find a quiet place, so if there's noise in the back, I apologize. So essentially, I'm So essentially, I'm not taking a position one way or the other on a warrant article. That's up to town meeting. What I will say is that as, you know, the former transportation board and now select board member, Michael Sandmann said, is that if the goal is to have us work with all of the stakeholders to identify potential parking spaces and then go through a very public process before the Transportation Board and EDAB, I would just ask that you allow staff to do so in the most unconstrained manner possible. So leave open the use of some meters, leave open the use of some residential spaces, leave open the, the potential for onsite parking. And allow us to, you know, work with, you know, our, you know, our fellow staff members in the planning department, as well as if need be, a consultant to look at the current parking supply, how it's currently being used and to identify potential locations where these spaces can be moved to during construction and after construction. And then to allow us to present that to the, you know, the, the appointed officials, you know, on the transportation board and on EDAB that would make that decision.
Great. Thank you so much, Todd, especially for making yourself available tonight.
My pleasure.
Comments or questions? John?
Just want to be sure everyone else had a turn. Yeah, I had a couple other comments and, and questions, actually. So it was stated that, oh, all of those statements we heard from merchants must have been based on the original petition and must have been people who didn't understand that there was this language that you're seeing on the screen tonight. If Liz doesn't mind, since she's in the room, could you comment on that? Are, are you okay? And will the business community go along with the, this revised language?
Okay, so my understanding is that it is a moving target. I was on a job site today on breaks rewriting my, could it be three minutes or two minutes rewriting my statement because I was completely unclear about, is it the new language or the old language? I understand this is going through a process, but it's very possible that it may be the old language, that's the original language that's presented to town meeting or presented at town meeting. And I, my sense is that the business community, and I'm just going to speak for myself in my sense, is that the business community would be comfortable with more specific language instead of, I understand this thing about maybe numbers, but perhaps percentages would work. You know, what's, what's happened is that we've taken something that we've all agreed on that we all worked really hard to agree. I live right above this lot and I was excited about this project, you know? And now I'm not excited about this project. And I love the idea of affordable housing because I feel like it's going to destroy the fabric of Brookline Village as I know it, what drew me here. And it's going to not be a very nice place for people to live. So if we can specifically find things and if promises are made and then they're kept, I feel like the business community would be comfortable instead of feeling like we're all scrambling to survive. That's, that's my feeling and I, maybe they'll type in what they think in the chat.
I wasn't finished with my second question.
Okay. John?
Yeah, sorry. I did say I had two questions. And the other question is for Roger, if he's still with us. I hope he is. And believe it or not, this puts aside all of these parking issues for the moment and just gets to the issue of what is the model of financial acceptability for a project of this nature? Let's say we resolve these parking issues and then we are left with the issue of that what the developer says has to be contributed by the town to make it a feasible development. Is there an upper limit? I heard 200,000 mentioned as being sort of beyond what would be acceptable as a, as a town subsidy per unit. But what would be the upper limit of acceptability given, given a solution to the, to the parking problems?
Maybe what you do, Roger, is say what we've subsidized for past projects. You'll have to unmute yourself.
And while he's doing that, I meant to add, and does that incorporate the value of the land as a contribution?
Well, the land would remain in, in as much public parking as possible. So there would be two different uses and you would end up having perhaps a split valuation. But, but yes, at, at the end of the day, the, the evaluation of the land should be taken into account and, and made fully transparent. It's not quite the same as putting, you know, hard dollars in as direct subsidies. There's no official limit that's been adopted per unit and as costs go up, what, what we should be able and willing to put in to, to support creating affordable housing in town, as expensive it is, is will go up as well. So to date, we have, we did St. Aden's, which, which, which was in the low to mid 100,000, including the town's trust fund and then some federal funds that went along with it. It was clear as the HAB looked at this, when we, when we got in the high hundreds and we could see the 200,000 plus, that that was, everybody, I think, realized that that was going to be more than we were going to be able to go. We had hopes that ARPA funding was going to enable us to be, you know, more, more generous than perhaps we would have been with only limited local trust funding and the, the timeline on that basically ended up not being able to work. So I, I don't, I don't think there's a specific number I'd, I'd be able or, you know, willing to, to put on today as a flat limit, but you, you see where we, where we drew the line. We think that made sense. And I think that we would be willing to, to not want to go in an excessive amount in the, in the future. This thing has to work and be within a reasonable range of costs for the town as well as the developer.
What year was St. Aden's?
Oh, at least 15 years ago.
Okay. Mike?
Yeah, I, I just want to respond to the question that, that Liz asks. The language that you see up there is the language that has been presented by the petitioner. So that changes, the, the original language is gone, that replaces it. That's what we would expect petitioner to to be moving at town meeting. And that's what we would be if voting to either to endorse or not to endorse this evening. So it does not specify numbers of spaces for surface parking under the building versus numbers of spaces on the street. What it says is that we're going to give the Transportation Division the responsibility and the, the task of, of trying to figure out where to put space.
Liz, you're going to have to, you're going to have to go to the mic because nobody can hear you unless you're at a microphone. We've been at this for over.
Susan Healy's been kicked off the Zoom and can't get back in. I just wanted to say that. She'd like to be back in.
Um, that's something to tell Devon. Okay. So she, yeah, try a different device is what I would tell her. We've been at this for over an hour, so I do want us to talk about whether or not we feel ready to vote on this, this evening. Miriam, did you want to say something? No? Okay. How are people feeling about this warrant article as it stands now? Roger, are you trying to add something? Please?
Yes, very quickly. The one key metric, since metrics have, have been raised, that is, is, has been retained. The original, the original promise as referenced was to keep all of the 39 spaces. And the one key metric that is a, a part of this revised article does maintain every single one of those 39 spaces.
So usually we don't vote the same night that we hear a warrant article. We can make an exception for that, although this is a high number warrant article. So the odds of this being taken up the first night of town meeting are pretty slim. So how are people feeling about whether or not we're ready to vote on this warrant article? I will just say that if we vote, then the AC may move reconsideration because they did not listen to their subcommittee. And that might push them towards revisiting that position. Any comments? Bernard?
I think we ought to just vote. I'm pretty confident or I'm pretty comfortable with the understanding that we have of the amendment. The petitioners have adopted this and it addresses all the problems that the business community raised. And I don't know what else we can say. If, if the advisory committee changes it, then we'll have to just reconsider, but I think we're ready.
Any other comments from any other select board members about whether or not we should vote on this here tonight?
I, I think the reason that you suggest a vote tonight, that it might prompt the advisory committee to take another look is a good one. I'd like to vote tonight.
Okay.
I'm comfortable voting tonight.
John?
I am going to abstain because I think that, that we did hear it clearly said that the merchants who spoke weren't really familiar with what this change is that is now in front of us. And I think, you know, I'd, I'd rather hear from them after they've had a chance to absorb this language. And of course, if they find this to be sufficiently protective of their interests, I would have zero problem in voting for this. But so far, I, I haven't heard that clearly stated because they haven't had a chance to kind of regroup and look at this, this revised language. And maybe they would make very different statements if they had been reacting to this instead of to the original petition, but I don't know.
That is certainly a good point. But I do sense that three members of the board are ready to vote. So we can always move reconsideration the next time that we meet. So why don't we vote tonight since a majority of the board feels comfortable with the language that's been presented? So I will move approval of the compromise language as offered by the petitioners this evening of warrant article 30. All those in favor? Bernard?
Aye.
John?
Abstain.
Miriam?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Thank you very much for working on this warrant article and good luck at town meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you very much.
And I'd like to thank the petitioners for actually coming up with this solution because it, it will avoid hopefully, depending on what the advisory committee does, another long, long battle.
Okay, thank you. I'll close the public hearing and then we need to move on to warrant article 12 CDICR complaint process. I believe that Mariah has been patiently waiting for over an hour. And I know that she has had a very rough couple of days.
Thanks, Heather. And I just want to say as a co-petitioner on the warrant article that just was voted on and a member of the original committee that you chaired, it's, it's also something that's close to my heart. I need to apologize that I only sent you the document for this discussion, like, I don't know, half an hour ago or so. As you said, it's been a very busy couple of days with the teachers' union negotiations. And I'm not going to try and go through it at all in great detail. I'm going to sort of provide, if it's okay, a brief narrative of what's happened over the past couple of weeks and where we're at right now. And feel free to interrupt me as I go along if I need to clarify something because I'm very tired and possibly not very coherent. So every week, I believe, for the past three or four weeks, we have met with CTOs and advisory committee and town council at least once, working through the details of the warrant article. It's been helpful to get the perspective and perspective of CTONS and get the guidance of town council. And if you look at the document I sent you, and I can pull it up on the screen just for the sort of edification of the other people who are in the viewing audience, you can see that there's a lot of green text on here that reflects text that has changed since it was submitted in the warrant article. So it would either be new text if it's underlined, if it's struck out, it means it was included before, but now it's struck out. Just shows you what's been changed. And you can see that there's whole sections. There's a couple of areas in track changes I haven't made green yet, but you can see where everything, and again, I'm just scrolling. So you can see there's been quite a bit of changes to the language. And generally just collaboratively with CTONS and with town council. And to the best of my knowledge, I believe this is accurate and would conforms with what Dick Banka sent you, the petitioner's version that you see in front, in front of you and the CTONS version conform exactly with one change that I will reference in just one moment. And that is about whether or not fines can be levied in the case of a violation of someone who's not a employee agent or official of the town or schools. So CTONS would, I believe, would remove that, although I don't believe they've voted. I believe they're voting tomorrow, but it's my sense that that's what they're going to do based on the conversation. As far as I know, also, advisory committee, subcommittee voted a slightly different version of this, which has other changes. I'm not sure I can accurately describe them. And I believe they're actually, or the, the subcommittee recommended those, but the full committee is discussing this now, I believe, and hasn't taken a vote. So I don't have information yet on, on that part of things. So I think I'll just conclude my presentation just to say that, just to reemphasize that the document, that the, the amended version that you've received is a collaboration between the petitioners who are representing the, the original drafting committee, town council and CTONS, and we're grateful for their collaboration. And, and there's just the one variation in language that we mentioned about fines that's between those two versions. And I don't know what's going on with AC, but thank you.
Thank you. And I guess we'll pull Melissa or town council over from, from their meeting if need be. But let's talk as a board. I understand that we've had a public hearing on this prior. So this is an update, a new version. Any comments from select board members? Bernard?
Yeah, I'm trying to read through the CTOS materials and other materials, sort of made my head burst. And I'm not sure how we can even, and this is not ready yet, so far as I can tell, although I do have some questions that I'd like someone to answer. And that is, you know, what is the need for this bylaw in Brookline? It looks like it's just an, an effort to try to find an easier way for people to file complaints that should be filed in either existing processes in town or MCAD. And, you know, I'm not sure that it makes a whole lot of sense. I'm really kind of frustrated with CTOS by not taking a position and saying, well, leave it up to town meeting to make the political decisions. I mean, that doesn't really help us very much. And I think, you know, they're the ones who really can talk about, you know, what structures we have in town currently that may make, you know, this type of bylaw unnecessary or where, you know, changes need to be made to address the issues that this bylaw is attempting to address. So and that's my sort of initial thoughts on this.
Mike?
The, sort of the central change in powers here is to create a complaint committee that has the power to subpoena witnesses. And it's interesting to see that that remains in here, even after it's gone through CTONS. And I think the, Bernard, that is a significant alteration in the, in the way.
We got that just a few minutes ago. So I, you know.
Right, no, I appreciate that. It's down on page eight.
Let Michael say what he wants to say.
Really, that's about it, is that I think that I just want to call your attention, the fact it's bottom of page eight, that that, that power remains in place. And if there is sort of one dividing line between those who might be in favor of these changes and those who might be opposed, it's. and those who might be opposed, it's probably around that issue.
John, did you want to say anything? Because Miriam has her hand up.
Take Miriam first.
Okay, let's take Miriam first.
Okay, great, thank you. So I want to say a couple of things. First, I want to say that I think that just Bernard and I disagree here on the core, which is I think it's a good idea for the town to have more ways for people to file grievances and complaints so that we could get ahead of them, right? One thing I've learned in medicine is that actually addressing and listening to people and investigating reduces lawsuits. So I really am in favor of having a process that allows more opportunity for us to hear about these things and do things about them before they become something more than we want. And the second thing I would say, and I want Mariah, I would love it if Mariah could just make sure I understand this correctly. This warrant article is a response to a warrant article bylaw change that was already passed by town meeting. So twelve and thirteen are getting the language right. The question of whether the language exists or not is moot. That warrant article was voted on and passed. This is about making sure that the language is correct and doing what it is we want it to do and in compliance with, you know, COTS and legal and all of that stuff. Is that correct?
Yes.
We're up against the wall.
Okay, hold on. John?
Well, Mariah, you just said yes, but do you, are you with CTOs' criticisms of the subpoena question?
I am frankly a little bit, well, I think there's two things. I don't agree with CTONS' criticisms of the subpoena. But CTONS, I believe, recognizes what town council has said, which is the subpoena structure as defined in the document is consistent with the legal precedent of Bloom Bush versus Worcester and that it will, and that it is employable by a commission such as this. And so I also think that actually CTONS is planning on voting. So I'm not, I'm not sure, I want to clarify, I think Bernard said that they have recused themselves, or I don't exactly remember what the word you said, Bernard, was that they're, and I apologize, I don't want to misquote you. But my understanding is that they are planning on voting tomorrow.
No, what I meant, and maybe I wasn't clear, in their report, they say over and over again, we're not going to make a decision on this. It's left to town meeting to decide these political issues, as they call it.
Well, I think that their determination was, is it like structurally appropriate? And they've done what they can there. The point that, for example, you know, is this the right thing to do? As Miriam said, this is what, you know, the question is, do you believe that we should have accessible venues so as to avoid issues becoming bigger than they have, which we have a historical precedent of in Brookline?
So if I may just continue the question because I didn't get to the second half of it. But on that first half, CTOs, as I understand it, offered an amendment language for people who have a concern about the subpoena being put in the hands of the complaint commission. And the amendment would make clear that the select board would be the issuer of the subpoena. Are you in agreement with that, that it should be the select board and not the complaint committee that issues the subpoena?
So as far as I know, you're referring to the CTONS draft report, which hasn't been voted. So I don't think we can say what CTONS has said. When I have been listening in their meetings, I haven't gotten a clear sense of the committee that the draft report reflects that or reflects other opinions. So I'm not sure that anyone at this point could say, oh, that is what CTONS says.
And the second half of my question was fines. Are you, does the language that you will go ahead and propose to town meeting call for there to be three hundred dollar daily?
It does. That is the one difference between, that is the one difference between the CTONS language and the petitioners' language is the fines.
So there is a difference. Okay, okay.
Yeah, I said that earlier in the presentation, but it might have been muddled in my exhaustion.
So I was not present at the meeting where we had a public hearing on this. So I watched it twice just to make sure that I didn't miss anything. I have to say, I do have serious misgivings about even this, these two versions of this warrant article. My first misgiving is that it feels like a duplicative process to a state agency that handles these as a professional and funded agency, MCAD. From what I could piece together from the hearing, it, this is trying to attempt to solve two problems. One, a frustration with that state agency that it takes so long. And two, that people don't either know or they don't trust that process. And so this is an attempt to make this accessible. I disagree with the assessment that this makes it accessible. I actually think that it makes it a little more confusing about jurisdiction. Because what happens if you file two simultaneously like the same complaint with MCAD and with the town of Brookline using this process? And MCAD comes back and finds no discrimination, but our process finds discrimination.
Do you want me to answer that or should I wait?
Sure, sure.
So the objective of this is not to, is not solely to do MCAD faster than MCAD. That's not the only, that's not the objective. The objective is to provide a venue where people with complaints, discrimination, legitimate discrimination complaints can be heard and receive redress for those issues. Now, it is true that the MCAD has a reputation for being slow. With that said, this process does allow people, it offers a very structured guidance of the different venues that people have to be able to complain in. Now, as to parallel processes, tomorrow, someone could walk into, I don't know, town hall and file a complaint with the HR department and also go to MCAD. The possibility of parallel processes already exists. If anything, this allows actually greater clarification about how, you know, we can have one venue where all of this comes together and there is one process where it starts with the CDO as the guidance and the liaison to the public to make clear the different venues.
Okay. I also heard a lot in the public hearing that with this new process, we will do a better job of advertising. Why can't we advertise the current process better? Why do we have to wait until we pass this?
So I want to be clear that the current process will not exist as of July 1st, 2022. Town meeting already passed alternative language that with a extended, a time extension provision that is not in compliance, hasn't gone through town council review, hasn't gone through this extensive public process review, doesn't go, hasn't gone through CTO and S review. So that other language from November 2019 is what would be in place on July 2022. Just so, just so you're super clear, you're not, it's not like what you think it is or this. It's completely different language, which is in the November 2019 town meeting files. And I'm really sorry, and I lost a little bit of the question there on what was the, I want to make that point before you answered the question, but I forgot your question. I haven't slept in almost forty hours. Okay.
No worries. The process.
Advertising. So the advertising, I think that you're right, that there could be a better job of it. But I think that the issue now, but I think that the issue is that people are really trying to make sure that this process is successful from day one. And it's explicitly part of the plan. And I'm not sure who, you know, I wasn't present for the original, you know, decisions around how to do the initial process as written in the bylaw. But I think that the intent is to do a great job now with the, what is considered to be an improved process by the petitioners and by the CDICR.
Okay. There was also a lot of conversation about training. We were using that language. And what I find frustrating is when I've heard, oh, well, we'll just train folks. We're talking about volunteers. Training from what I've seen on this select board, it's very difficult to find money for training. Then we have to figure out what the training is, who are we contracting with? We have to keep a record of who was trained, like who gets trained, how often? How do we make sure that that training is absolutely appropriate for the level of responsibility for this effort? Has anyone figured out how many hours and how often? And potentially, how much that training is going to cost?
Town council offered to basically design and approve the training. And he did not specify how that would, what the form of that would take, how many hours and so forth.
Mr. Callanan, do you have any like rough idea of what the extent of that training might look like?
Not really, but the concern I have is the potential litigation of passing this bylaw in a claim for civil rights violation for failure to train the people involved. So if this were to pass, my biggest concern, my thing that would keep me up at night would be that type of claim. So I would do everything in my power to make sure that these people are adequately trained. There was talk about, you know, rules and regulations and who would create the rules and regulations. Whatever committee creates those rules and regulations, they're not going to create them. I will hire a consultant experienced in human resources investigation and they will draft us, you know, what the rules and regulations should be, best practices, how to conduct an investigation. So it would be, you know, credible, reliable, not subject to challenge. And I would have those regulations dropped on the committee's desk the first time they would be for them to adopt. Because the biggest thing I worry about is this going forward with inadequately trained complaint committee members and commission members.
Thank you. I see Miriam's hand up, so I want to give her an opportunity. But I do still have a lot more to say, Miriam.
You're on mute.
Thank you. I have one question and one comment or suggestion. And the first question is actually to Joe. How comfortable are you if this goes down, right? If this, if warrant article twelve and thirty don't get passed and we end up with the original language in the original warrant article? You know, I just wonder, because I want to remind everybody, that is what we're talking about here. And then the second is, I might suggest, Heather, that we don't vote on this tonight because there's still a lot of moving pieces. I realize it, I don't know if that's feasible. But I just think there's still, it sounds like it's still a work in progress a bit. And also, poor Mariah, I think is, I feel like, you know, I just feel like she's at a little disadvantage for no fault of her own. So those are, that's it. I'll mute myself now.
Okay, Joe, did you want to try to address Miriam's question?
Sure. So what was passed in nineteen, I would have less concerns about the legality of it and the potential for litigation. It has been approved by the attorney general's office. So there is that veneer of validity. It doesn't include fines, which worry me about if we were to find someone that would prompt, increase the likelihood of the respondent filing appeal and challenging the validity of it. There's problems with who does the investigations and, you know, that type of lack of specificity. We could handle that with delegations of authority. The commission could delegate the authority for investigations to town council's office and we could do the investigations. So there's workarounds for the problems with the existing bylaw that would go into effect on January 1st. Regardless, even if this were to pass, it's unlikely that the AG's office would approve it before January 1st. So come January 2nd, I have to figure out how we implement what's on the books anyways, whether this is passed or not.
This is July 1st, though, isn't it? Oh, because you mean because of the six month, the six month extension?
No, 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 I'm sorry. I thought the existing language was what comes into, what's on the books comes into effect July 1st.
It does.
Oh, sorry. I haven't been up as many hours as Mariah. This is my fourth hour of my fourth meeting. Sorry, July 1st. So come July 2nd, Lloyd and I have to figure out what that bylaw requires us to do, even if this is passed or even if there's no action.
Okay. Bernard?
Maybe I'll just make a statement. It seems to me that no action on this puts the January, the 2019 bylaw into effect, which is not going to be a disaster. Based on what you say, does it include subpoena power? I don't believe so. Oh, okay.
Does not include?
Yeah, my understanding, it does not include subpoena power, which is one of the major concerns I had.
Okay, correct.
So I have a number of other questions and comments. So there was some comments during our public hearing about liability. And I was a little surprised that they were outrightly dismissed. I actually share John Van Scoyak's concerns about the liability that this would open the town up. I understand that the select board actually has subpoena powers. I've been on the select board for five years. We have never used that. And I don't think I would be comfortable doing that. And I feel comfortable as a select board member right now. But even I don't think I would feel comfortable with that level of responsibility. So giving that to someone else who is also a volunteer, I, I'm not sure I can get to a comfort zone with that. Where do we stand on the neighbor versus neighbor situation? Is that currently still in the petitioners' version?
When you say neighbor versus neighbor, you mean allowing for complaints against other entities other than the capital T town of Brookline?
Yes.
Yes, that is still included in the language.
Okay. I, that definitely makes me uncomfortable. I'm not sure that we're, we are the adequate place to to resolve those types of disputes. Fines, I'm not comfortable with the fines. I'm actually a little surprised that if we're going to fine, why are there not, why are there not fines for people who bring complaints that are then found to be either made up or unfactual? Sorry, we're having some technical issues. But the biggest thing that I am very concerned about is there's no presumption of innocence in what I'm reading out of this. I am worried that this warrant article and this process is going to be weaponized to intimidate people that get on the wrong side of certain volunteers in town government. Mariah, would you like to respond?
Yeah, thank you. I think that CTONS also had concerns and questions about that. And they added in specific language, eliminating the ability of third parties to file, well, they didn't add the language. They eliminated the language, talking with town council. There is no ability for third parties to provide complaints. The review, which was already a plausibility review by the CDO, is all, has significantly strengthened privacy and confidentiality language. So there is, that is not an area, I think, that So there is, that is not an area, I think, that 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 perhaps for people who had earlier concerns, it has been tightened and strengthened significantly from our initial draft.
Okay. The other concern that I have, and I guess this is kind of related to what I just said. One of the benefits that I see to MCAD being the appropriate body to take on this work is that even though we are a town the size of some cities and we, can you just shut your lid? One of the, hold on, let me, let me start over. So we live in a town that could very well be a city. You know, sixty four thousand residents certainly feels like a lot of people. But when you start to volunteer and get involved, it really does feel like a small town. Each one of us is only separated probably by one or two degrees. And so drawing from that pool and having complaints adjudicated by people who know these these other people, they are too close to it, in my opinion. It, we need a state agency so that they, you don't run the risk of people knowing more than the facts of the case and bringing their potential biases into it. I also think that this really minimizes the work of true professionals in this field. I worked for the Department of Civil Rights at Mastod. I saw exactly how many hours are devoted to investigating complaints. And to think that volunteers who we train are going to do the same work better, faster, I think it is not dealing with the fact that we we always think that we're going to do things well before they they actually do it. Every single deadline that we've had for any task force or select board committee, we we've inevitably blown past the deadline because volunteers, it's very difficult to get their sustained attention and commitment. We've been without a CDICR chair for over a year. It's been very difficult to recruit for this particular commission. And from some of the language that I've witnessed in some of the recordings and the meetings, I'm not comfortable trusting some members of that body with what is being proposed.
Heather, are you clear that the the appointment of the complaint commission is now help rests with the select board and not the CDICR?
My understanding is that it was going to be done in congruence.
Consultation, but you are the appointing authority.
Yes, I understand.
I just wanted to make sure because that is a newer change. So.
Yeah. There are a number of issues that I am, I'm just deeply, deeply concerned about this. In my opinion, I I think this is just bad public policy. So I I can't, I can't stand behind it and I will probably be a no vote. Any comments, John?
And Mariah, I want to thank you for being very patient and good natured about the concerns and the questions that are being raised about this thing that you that you and others have worked so hard on. But I'm going to ask a couple more and.
Can I ask a favor, though? Can, like, can we keep it really snappy? Because I I have been up for forty hours.
Yeah.
And I've had like six hours of sleep in four days.
I'm not known for snappy, but I'll do my best.
Please, I beg you.
Yeah, by the way, I think, you know, that we probably won't take it up tonight.
I, let's not vote here tonight.
We won't vote here tonight. Okay.
If that's the case, can I make a little request? And I know this is maybe unorthodox, but is it possible to get just some of the comments in written form? I don't, one of my co-petitioners is sick. I'm not exactly sure because of what's been going on. I wasn't able to check with either one of them. I would rather, rather than me preparing very exhausted, off the cuff answers for you, I would rather come back and do this properly. And
Yes.
Do everyone the favor of giving you proper answers and myself the favor of going to bed. So.
We can do that.
Thank you.
Really, let's get to the point.
Oh, I thought we just agreed that I would.
Not do that.
Back up.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll send you any other concerns. I just wanted to go on record with my position currently.
Thank you.
Coming back also, right, to to answer?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, if we can make that happen before it gets taken up. Okay.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you, Mariah. Get some sleep.
Thank you. Bye.
Bye for all you do.
Thanks. Have a good night.
Okay, I believe there is only one other warrant article that we wanted to try to take up. Miriam, did you?
I think there are two. There's, there's the peep, the single use plastic.
Oh, single use plastic. Thank you. We're not, it's what?
Did we vote on it?
Oh, we, I guess we already voted on it and there's no change. So I was correct. We only have one more.
It was substantially revised, right?
Okay.
Pretty has to tell me what Devin is saying because I can't.
Don't, don't worry about it. We're just having a back and forth about whether or not we have to take a position on either twenty two or twenty five. I think there's some misremembering going on. But right now, we're going to concentrate on Parks and Rec. I believe that is warrant article, what, twenty six? Do we have Deborah Brown or, oh, I see Lee Jackson. Lee, do you have the latest version?
Yes, I have the latest version. Do you all have the latest version?
Oh, I think we do. I'm being told that we do. Good.
And Devin, if you wouldn't mind promoting Jerry Kelly and John Lewitiz. In the case there's questions, they might be better suited to answer. Thank you in advance.
Is the latest version in our package?
Okay, but no Deborah Brown.
I know that Deborah was not feeling well today. I I just pinged her, but again, I I think she's under the weather, so I'm not sure she'll be able to join us.
Okay. Okay.
But that's her response. So it's a report. It's not a, it's not a, it's not the newest version.
Okay, so what I'm being told is there is a report, but it is not necessarily the warrant article that is being moved. So if somebody can clarify what is going on, since we don't seem to have the petitioner available tonight.
I am told the petitioner has two folks who can speak on behalf of this. Arthur is supposed to be here and Ryan, are they actually here? I don't see, I see Ryan Black, but I don't see Arthur Conquest.
Let's promote Ryan Black.
Hello, yeah, there appears to be a misunderstanding. I was asked to watch this and report back to Deborah and she's feeling under the weather. But I am, I am not up to date on this warrant article. I I think the, there is some distance, though, between the Parks and Rec Commission and the petitioner, but that's all I pretty much know.
Thank you for being succinct. Okay, let's hear something from Parks and Rec and maybe we will have to table this as well.
As we did last week.
Would, good evening, Chairperson Hamilton and the rest of the board. This is Lee Jackson, Director of Recreation. I'm curious if you'd like to hear from the Park and Recreation Commission first? Or would you like to hear from myself representing the Recreation Department?
Let's hear from the commission.
Okay. So I guess that's me. Good evening, everyone. This is Nancy O'Connor. I did not realize I would be presenting per se this evening. I hear you talking about a current version. I have not seen one. So I I don't really know what we'd be talking about.
So Nancy, let me interrupt you. Since nobody seems to know what we're even discussing, maybe we should just save ourselves some time, table this until another meeting.
Fine with me. I'd be happy to, at any point, come back and speak with you all. We've been, we've been working with Deborah a little bit. And I know that Lee's been trying to gather information for you folks. And, you know, we think it's important, so let me just say that. And we can talk about it later, but we think it's really important. It's just how we get there.
Exactly. Okay, John.
Hi, Nancy. It's John. I did want to ask a question while you're here and Lee might want to answer this as well. Because I've been looking at the advisory committee recommendation on this, which is to refer it to the Park and Rec Commission. What what's your reaction to that?
So, John, we did send a letter this afternoon on our vote and and the Park and Rec Commission voted to refer to, back to the commission so that we could study it. Initially, it was to come back next spring with all the other task forces that we're creating potentially. And we changed it because it is so important to report back for the fall town meeting. I envision, and some of that's in the letter to you, a committee of folks from various boards and commissions and departments, including the diversity, inclusion, the Park and Rec Commission, the VHA, people from the school department, folks that can identify folks in need as well as trying to create the funding mechanisms for this. We want this to be successful right off the bat and we need to have a solid funding mechanism. And, you know, and I think that's the something the department's going to come up with, coupled with the town itself. So yes, we we are, we would like to see it referred so that we can think long and hard and understand the the whole bylaw specifics and more to the bylaw, frankly.
And if I may ask, Lee, are you on board with that also? Yes, she's nodding yes. Okay.
Oh, yeah. So I'd also say, and then I'll let you go because you, you don't want to hear from me. But again, it's a very, very important situation. And and we, everybody in the commission said the same thing when we spoke about it. We we took it up three different times because we were looking for a more current version and and you're trying to get just more information. You know, I, when I was a child, I was the recipient of some assistance. And there's nothing that I think is more important than being able to help folks that that need it and identify themselves as users. I mean, I think there's so much to this that we need to explore. And it goes much further than what we see on the surface.
I see Lee Jackson's hand up.
Yep. I was just going to suggest for the for the board to consider if you'd like to hear from the Recreation Department on how this would impact the department. I'm prepared to do that tonight if it helps you at all with context, once you get the final version or the latest version, pardon me, from Miss Deborah Brown. If you'd rather us come back, we will do that as well.
I fear that there will be new information, so let's just agree to sit tight. I do apologize, Lee, since you are staff and it is nine PM that we have now tried to hold this hearing or follow up, I think, twice. Michael, Simon?
I, yeah. My, I I want to make sure my understanding is correct. We, there's five hundred thousand dollars in ARBA funds available for scholarships, recreation subsidies and so for, which is the intent of the article. Am I, am I correct about that?
I can't speak on the article, but I will say that the select board did vote to add five hundred thousand dollars at the recommendation of the panel to add to the Brookline Community Foundation's Safety Net Program, specifically earmarked for municipal programs, I think mostly.
Rec, okay. So so if we delay this, refer it back to the park, to the commission, the implementation of what the article intends isn't really adversely affected. I think that's a reasonably fair statement.
I'm not sure we can really answer that question right now, especially without the petitioner.
I don't honestly think that the petitioner will know the answer to the question. I think it's up to the, if the, if the combination of of Parks and Rec and and the Community Foundation, if they, if they're able to work together with those funds to do what the article is looking for.
I would take this conversation offline and let's reconvene when we know more concrete information. Miriam?
Yeah, I I just want to say that, first, I feel uncomfortable continuing to have this conversation without the petitioner's present. The second is that I I agree, we still have a lot to work out. That's why Mel and I are going to meet with BCF. I mean, I just, I don't think that's a piece of the puzzle we can fit yet into this. We don't have enough information. So.
Thank you, Miriam.
Okay.
Okay, John?
And I am just looking for a path forward that recognizes that the advisory committee has written a very good report on this and has voted to refer to Park and Rec. And I just heard the Park and Rec Commission and the director say tonight, they would find that acceptable. And I I'm kind of guessing that at the end of the day, the select board will want to go along with that. I can't predict, who knows? But I, we're talking about bringing people back again and again, you know, for for yet more discussion of this. And it's a moving target. It seems to be changing a lot. The sponsors seem to be having difficulty, you know, in terms of their schedules being part of this. So I I hope that we'll find a way forward that recognizes the advisory committee's work on this. And if we agree with the advisory committee, you know, let's get to that vote when we can. Town meeting is starting next week, so it's it's just time, the clock is ticking on this.
Thank you. I believe that was the end of our agenda this evening. And we will reach back out to those petitioners and interested parties for the warrant articles that we did not vote on here tonight. Thank you so much.